All right, good evening, everyone. This is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Montclair Planning Board. Notice of this meeting is posted in the lobby of this building and also in the local papers. We are being streamed live on montclair.peg.tv and also broadcast on Channel 34. First up is our roll call.
Chair Wynn?
Here.
Vice Chair Brodak is excused. Mr. Schwartz?
Present.
Mr. Brandon?
Here.
Counselor Schleger?
Here.
Ms. Willis?
Here.
Mr. Rooney?
Here.
Mr. Ian Wally is excused. Ms. Lockman?
Here.
Mr. Barr is excused. Mr. Gilmer?
Present.
Okay.
All right.
We have tonight Dennis Galvin couldn't -- is maybe late?
He'll be showing later.
So we have Andrew Ball.
I thought he looked a little different.
He was better.
Okay. We won't tell, then.
We won't.
All right. We don't have any minutes, so we'll get the show right on the road, Counselor. We're resuming the hearing on Lackawanna Plaza.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Again, my name is Tom Schroutner from the law firm of Keye, Zoshaheni and Giotamasi here on behalf of the applicant as continuation of our application for preliminary and final site plan approval on the Lackawanna project. When we were last here, we had presented preliminary concept for what's been referred to as stanchions in the parking field as a way of attempting to come to, I guess, a compromise, if, for lack of a better word, on concerns which have been expressed by members of the board and the public regarding the alleged historic nature of elements on the site. And as we indicated at that hearing, we would submit in advance of the next hearing actual updated engineering plans and architectural plans to provide the finer details for presentation to the extent that there was questions and concerns regarding what that would look like and how that would impact the site. So this evening, we have two witnesses. We have Mr. Bruce Stevie, who the board has heard from before, our architect, who will present testimony regarding the updated submission, which was made in advance of his hearing, as well as hear from Kevin Webb, who will also testify regarding the site engineering details regarding these updated plans. At a subsequent hearing to tonight, depending on when it's scheduled, we intend to hopefully conclude with parking, traffic, and planning testimony. So we do not intend to get -- or we cannot get to parking and traffic this evening. But with that being said, also to just set a little bit of the backdrop, there's been statements at prior meetings regarding our ongoing negotiations with a prospective tenant. Those negotiations, I'm pleased to report, are continuing and moving, I think, in the right direction, so much so that what you'll hear this evening is some of the design elements that were submitted as part of the package that the board has seen and will be testified to tonight were developed in conjunction with conversations and communications as part of those negotiations with the prospective tenant. So there's -- it's -- we're moving, I guess, away from the conceptual and more towards the, "This is specifically what a proposed supermarket tenant wants to see at the site." So with that being said, I'd ask Mr. Bruce Stevie to come forward, and I believe Mr. Stevie has already been sworn in, but can take care of whatever details we need.
Could you just raise your right hand? Did you swear from the testimony about giving this matter the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
State your name, spell your last name for the record.
Bruce Stevie, S.T.I.E.V.
And, Mr. Stevie, before you get started, there is a PowerPoint presentation, which I think largely consists of the plans, which were already submitted to this board in advance of tonight's hearing. However, I think in an abundance of caution, we should mark it as A30, and we'll provide an electronic copy for the file, as it may, depending on where the testimony takes us, may contain one or two variations on those submittals.
Okay.
I can't figure out how to get it right. Good evening. So as Mr. Schroutner said, we have developed a little bit further the concept that we had presented at the last hearing. It is similar to a solution that was presented in the Barton-Ross review, option, I believe it was called Option 1 or Option A. And it develops on the idea of maintaining as many of the train platform stanchions as possible and then reusing ones that need to be removed.
Sir, I just want to, since we're using language here, you said, "maintaining as possible." As possible for what?
A variety of different things. One, the needs of the supermarket tenants. Two, the needs to maximize parking in the parking area in front of the supermarket. And the third is the ability to provide emergency vehicle access into the parking lot and to the front of the building. We did look at other options, we did look at some of the other options and some of the other suggestions by the architectural consultant, and one of the studies was to reconfigure the parking area. But again, in order to do that, we ended up losing a significant amount of spaces. And that wasn't something that we could present to or wasn't acceptable to the prospective tenants that we were speaking with. The other thing that we did is we did go walk through the facility, verified the column counts, and verified some of the existing conditions, so that we were sure the column counts that we were presenting were accurate. And we also verified the existing columns to determine that they, in fact, were the columns that we had counted. So the plan that you see on the screen in front of you represents the revised plan that we have been working on. Some of the features that you'll see, you'll see that there is a development of the idea of the train tracks coming through the parking lot. This would be in the form of a paving enhancement. We've been looking at a variety of different paving enhancements. We need to work with the landscape architect and engineer a little bit further before the final selections are made. You'll see that there is a section of train sheds that we're actually proposing to be integrated into a canopy system in front of the building. So they'll remain. I'm going to go actually a little closer, so you can see that. So what we're proposing, we're currently proposing is to maintain the train platform columns in the parking area where they work in conjunction with the parking layout. We've adjusted the graphic of the train to represent the dual tracks, as opposed to the more graphic image that we showed initially, which was just a single track coming down the center. So this represents a little bit better the historic two-train track coming in. We have maintained the roof system and the column system in the entrance to the grocery store. And then we're proposing to maintain a portion of the roof system and columns at the entrance to the retail on the west facade of the building. This is a view from out at the intersection of Bloomfield Avenue and Grove. When you look in, there's, again, the series of columns that will be across the parking area. Those will be incorporating now a light fixture, like, as we discussed last time. But we've actually been looking at a different way of attaching light fixtures and a different style of light fixture, and I'll show you that as we get in a little closer. So you can see in this image, we're proposing that the columns that are remaining in place will have a base of concrete that will be poured around the bottom of them to protect them from vehicles. And then the light fixtures are now, instead of hanging off the steel, they'll actually be attached to the side, so they'll be similar to a pendant mount fixture. The fixtures have a railroad look to them. They've got a shade and exposed light fixture on the underside of them. So again, they're reminiscent of light fixtures you might find in older train facilities. This is another view showing that the proposed light stanchions out in the parking area. So again, you can see there's a lantern-type light fixture that's attached to the structural steel column. That will be repeated on all of the columns that are going to remain, as well as be added to the canopy that runs across the front of the building at the supermarket. This is the view from the overpass on Grove Street, and you can see, again, what we propose to do now at the retail facades is to express the roofs of the train platforms as canopies over the sidewalk. And we've had some discussion about how that sidewalk might be used and furnished, and we think that this is another way of providing a recall of the train sheds, as well as providing architectural interest and the ability to provide protection from the elements on that sidewalk and maybe shading for the seating areas along that sidewalk. This is a view from in the parking lot, looking towards the facade of the, the west facade of the retail. You've got the supermarket retail and the canopy running along this side, and then you can see at the end the canopy detail over the sidewalk fronting on the retail, the west-facing retail frontage. You can also see the expression of the train tracks. That'll occur in the pavement. I've got a detail of that I can show you in a few minutes. And then the next item that we're presenting tonight is further detail of how the horse trough will be restored and how it will be integrated into a water feature. And again, if I can remind you that that will be relocated to the front plaza section, the pedestrian plaza section, along Bloomfield Avenue. I'll point your attention to the, I'll call your attention to the photographs at the bottom left corner of the page. There's a photo of the existing horse trough now, and then next to it is a historic photo of the horse trough in the past. And you can see that, at some point, a lot of the detail work of the horse trough was removed and replaced with brick. So as part of the restoration and relocation of the horse trough, we're proposing to restore back the detailing that was removed from the horse trough structure, reintroduce a cast stone cap at the top of the horse trough, and then introduce, again, a series of plaques. On the back of the horse trough, there'll be a plaque, a historic plaque commemorating the train station and the horse trough and maybe its original location. And at the front will be a similar plaque located in the center that, again, will recall the Lackawanna Plaza history and provide a water flow into the basin of the horse trough. And that'll be accomplished with a recirculating pump, and all of the plumbing can be concealed behind the plaque that's mounted to the face of the horse trough, so that we don't have to do any intrusive plumbing work within the brick of the structure. The next item that we have detailed is the bus shelter on Bloomfield Avenue. Again, of the columns that we're removing, we're actually going to be reusing. Eight of those, four of those will be in this bus shelter structure that will replace the existing bus shelter on Bloomfield Avenue. It'll be reconstructed. It'll have a glass roof to it, along with glass sides and back, to provide protection from the elements. And there'll be a series of benches included in that, and then some signage for the bus shelter itself. So again, I think that this is a unique reuse of some of the steel that's being removed from the train station. And then the last slide I have tonight is, again, a slide of the parking lot, and there's a series of different treatments that we're showing as examples of what we might be able to achieve. One is a stamped and impregnated asphalt finish. That's something that can be done to the surface of the asphalt. Another is where they roll in a pattern and then impregnate the depression of the pattern with a plastic material that becomes embossed into the concrete. So it's an, that's an integral process, and that's an, there's an example of that here and an example of that here. So these are a series of different ways of introducing the graphics into the asphalt in the parking area. There's one other slide that I'd like to show, and that is, we're also proposing a series of plaques, historic plaques, recalling the history of the train station. And this is a plaque that I saw on one of my walks through Hoboken. They recently completed a renovation and restoration of the 14th Street viaduct, and most of that structure was replaced. But they, what they did was a very nice job of documenting through photographs, through written description, and through actual drawing samples, the history of the viaduct. And so I think that this is probably a very appropriate way of, again, doing the same thing for the history and the function of the train station. And those, these plaques would be located in the pedestrian plaza passageway that connects between Lackawanna Plaza and the new shopping center to the west. And that concludes my presentation.
I don't have any way to address it.
All right. Well, just a couple of things that I don't think you talked about too much that I'd like a little more detail with. The treatment of the, and you can see on that slide, and if you're looking at the slide of the whole parking lot, there's the treatment of the wall and the entrance and the pass-through, because that's a revision of what's there now.
Yes. Right now, we're not sure exactly what's there. There's part of the--
Concrete.
Part of the existing shopping facility.
Right, and outside, and outside also, there's concrete.
It's raw concrete in that case, yes.
So you're going to add, it looks like you're adding brick in there. I mean, can you give us, you know, you've, it looks like you've got an awning, you've got doors. Is that, it's up in the air, or you're not sure?
Well, no. I think what we're currently proposing is, we're talking about the reconstruction of the stairway that comes down from Grove Street, and that's in this location here. And that will be constructed out of concrete. We're looking to reuse or replicate a similar railing system to what exists there now, so that that is consistent. And then as far as the facade of the wall goes, we're looking to introduce cast stone elements, similar to what we're doing on the retail supermarket component, and then brick panels in between to provide a nicer finish of that wall surface. Again, once we expose it, we'll know more about what's happening. If there's anything significant in there, obviously, I think that that would change our mind as far as what the finished product might look like, and that might inform a design further. But at this point in time, we don't know what's behind those walls. As far as the entryway and the awnings go, those are leading to the underpass below Grove Street. There will be a glass storefront in that location and some awnings to provide some protection from the weather. Those will be canvas or fabric awnings.
So it's going to be glass? And again, any thought as to how that's going to function? That's going, because that's going to give you access directly into the building across the street, right?
That's correct.
So it's going to be something that can only be actuated with a key, a card?
Yeah, most likely it'll be some sort of a key fob.
But it sounds like you really haven't fleshed out any detail with that yet, right?
I wouldn't say fully, but it's some form of secure glass storefront, yes.
Let's go over to the opposite side of the parking lot from that. You've got what looks like an extension of an awning that is going to cover part of the parking spaces that are up against the, that side of the building?
Right. Along this edge of the building, we're proposing to maintain the roofs of the train sheds that remain and then cover up, similar to what is done in the current shopping center, the area in between with some skylight structures to provide a covering over the walkway in front of the retail.
Well, can I, can I ask you, when you say "maintain the roofs," I think, I think at that point, the walkway is covered, but the parking space, there are no parking spaces in front. It looks like, from your drawing, that the parking spaces partially extend under what's being drawn in here. So is it being extended out? Is it meant to be the same?
No.
Same width?
I can answer that question. There is a column line that occurs right in here, and we want to maintain those columns. Let me see if I can, if I have an image that shows that better. In this image, you can see it, there's a column line, the first column line of the train--
Right.
--platforms is immediately adjacent to the building.
Mm-hmm.
Then there's another column line that's approximately, I think it's 20 feet away, approximately 20 feet away. And so that column line is just outside the sidewalk line. And so what we're proposing to do is have a little bit, a little bit of a cantilever beyond the edge, because it would look odd stopping it right at the column line. Let it cantilever slightly, and then, and then that's where we would maintain that edge. So it's partially covering the parking spot, completely covering the sidewalk in that location.
Okay. And the, you have glass skylights, or?
That's, that's what we're contemplating at this point in time. Something similar to what was done in the renovation to the, to the shopping mall.
And just for orientation's sake now, if I'm looking and reading and understanding this correctly, and noting the position of the doors that you have that go under, that open the passage that goes under Grove Street, it appears that the area where you have the islands there, now you can stay on that, you can stay on that slide, yeah, that area where you've got the islands under the first, right, that's approximately where the stores are located now, if I'm reading this correctly, because the mall, kind of, the mall in front of the current, the old path mark goes forward from the doors that go under the overpass, and then there's stores on, there were stores on the other side, the Popeyes, the Dots, Dunkin' Donuts.
A pizza, please.
So that's approximately that space that we're talking about there--
That's correct.
--where those stores are located. And then the area that is up next in between the two outer portions, I'm sorry, in between the island portion and the next, you're proposing handicap parking in there. I see on the drawing, but it looks like you only have two hand, or four handicap spaces. And I'm wondering if that's up to ADA requirements?
We'll have our engineer--
Because that seems a little light.
Our engineer can testify to that. He's coming up.
And the, in front of the store, immediately in front of the store, that's going to be, there is going to be an awning element to the existing stanchions that you're preserving that will extend over, create an awning over the sidewalk that runs in front of the store windows.
That's correct.
Mr. Stevie, could you go to the picture of the perspective shot from Bloomfield Avenue on the parking? Could you tell the board what the distance is from Bloomfield Avenue to the facade of the proposed new building?
I have my engineer here who's going to be able to answer that question. I don't know the exact dimension of--
Because it looks as if you're shortening the foreground, the, from my take, and it appears that there's 360 feet, which is what I think has been calculated. And from my take, you're visually distorting the actual amount of C of parking that we're now going to look at in the front. Given that that is both a, against the goals of the master plan and that we are being asked to effectively demolish elements of a local, state, and historic monument, I'm curious why we're looking at this proposal now, some nine months later, when these very same concepts were kicked around and presented to, to the applicant, and dialogue requested at the time, but from a process standpoint, we're still facing a monologue. You're asking us to evaluate knockdowns of elements, but effectively, we haven't gone into the details. You haven't sat down with our architectural consultant, who, they've asked you to do that multiple times, to review some of these things, whether or not it's feasible to maintain the canopies. I'm just, of course, it's your, your client's application that can do it any way they want, but I'm just curious why we're now looking at this some nine months later, effectively we've made no progress in what had been proposed months ago, and we're now looking at this now, and yet we still don't have a dialogue to actually review this. If, if ultimately this board is facing a decision to knock down this monument, it would seem to be the logical thing to do would be to evaluate that with all the board professionals in a smaller setting, such as the subcommittee, the redevelopment subcommittee, or revision subcommittee, so that those professionals could come back and say to board members, "Yeah, we've reviewed everything. We've gone through every possible scenario here. We can't adjust the parking. We can't do it this way." You're-- We can't do it this way. We're facing a monologue here where you're coming to us and saying, this is what we want to do, this is what our prospective client wants, and you should do that. But we haven't really reviewed whether all this is feasible, why we have to knock down the canopies. Now you presented the idea of an emergency vehicles. This is the first time that's come up. So I'm just curious why you all haven't engaged with Barton Ross and our traffic people as we do in these subcommittees to work through a lot of these details, and this is now being presented, you know, nine months later, when this was effectively put on the table then. Again, your client can operate however they want, but I just don't get it.
I think I fundamentally disagree with many of the assertions that were made in the context of that question. And candidly, from a legal standpoint, and certainly the board's attorney can advise on this, applications in front of boards have to be conducted in public at public and news meetings. We can't sit behind closed doors with committee, subcommittees, or ad hoc committees.
Please, sir, we, all the time when we get new site plans, we have board members review them in a smaller setting so that they can report back to the full.
And this meeting underwent a number of DRC, HPC, as well as individual.
And you're now presenting elements you said couldn't be done at the time.
I respectfully disagree with that.
We listened to testimony from your applicant saying, we couldn't do this back then, and now you're presenting the very things that you couldn't do. It's just, I'm shocked, sir, I'm really shocked.
May I add one more thing?
Yes.
Yeah. In my mind, there's two other things that are open that you're making the presumption that are not problematic, and that one of those is that tunnel. I mean, is that, is there an easement for you to use that privately?
There is.
Oh, you've discussed, that's been affirmed now that that's definitely?
There's a filed map which indicates the easement in favor of our predecessor entitle runs to, runs to us as the successor entitle. There's been, I don't want to be, put Mr. Ball on the spot because my discussions were not with Mr. Ball, they were with Mr. Galvin, but yes, there's.
Okay, because this is the first time that you've affirmed that that's the case.
Yeah, we had been for a long time, had been looking at that issue to try and see what the best answer we could get was, and the best answer is, this is what the.
The best answer? Does that mean that's the answer?
That, yes, that's what the answer is. We were hoping, we were trying to see if there are any other documents that spoke to the issue, but the only thing is the filed map, which references the easement runs to our predecessor entitle. And then there's, as a separate issue, there's, this, that, I mean, not at the risk of changing topics, but the reality is, this project would be the only development project in town that would then have, that wouldn't have restricted access to a podium where there's units built over that podium. Every single new project in town that has podium parking under residential units has secured access, either through fobs or otherwise, which we discussed a moment ago. So we can't be the only one to not have secured access. And it's our right, obviously, pursuant to the easement, to control the access, but the, from just a marketing standpoint, it would be a nightmare, and to mention security and insurance issues in terms of having unrestricted access into the secured parking area. So that also informs part of the issue, which we've, and that position is not without having taken into careful consideration, you know, some of the expressions have been made from a number of board members as well as the public, but that's, unfortunately, that's simply where we are in terms of being able to move forward with the project. And we are, again, it's getting a little bit beyond the scope of this testimony, and certainly Mr. Short's comments, but we are, and I think there's been testimony to this back, we're providing safe, improved pedestrian access, notwithstanding what's existed currently, where, you know, people sort of walked into a parking area that was aggrate, it wasn't exactly flat, and not to mention private property, but now what will happen is, people will walk to the corner for the light, they'll, actually, we think that light's going to be improved by the county, we don't know 100% for sure, but they'll go across the crosswalk, they'll walk down the sidewalk, and they'll go down a set of stairs on the right that doesn't currently exist, which we're improving. And if somebody can't use the stairs, they just go a little bit further, and then there's, again, access there. So we think that this is, again, it's an improved condition from what exists, and it's certainly a safer condition.
I know tonight isn't the night for parking and traffic issues, but you read the report from our parking consultant.
Yes, and certainly.
So that's, there's issues there that need to be addressed, but next time.
I agree, that's a big topic of testimony, and we'll be getting there.
And, you know, I went to many of the meetings with the community prior to this application being filed, and one of the key things was activating Glen Ridge Avenue. And so that's not in your plan to have a back door to get into the supermarket through Glen Ridge Avenue?
The, so.
Or could not be in your plan, because we're talking about, you know, you're moving forward with this, but we really haven't even talked about it. And to me, that's a big issue, not having Glen Ridge Avenue activated.
Yeah, I mean, on that front, the, and again, it's, I don't want to say it's an issue of impossibility from some, you know, architectural or engineering standpoint, that's simply a reality of the way the big buildings configured. The tenant that we've spoken to and other tenants we've spoken to simply are not interested in having the back of the house have access there. And I certainly understand the point that it would be nice to activate Glen Ridge Avenue, you know, based on providing that type of rear access, but it's simply not something that we can get, we can't get it, it's just, we can't accommodate that one either.
Okay, my question then to the architect, there's the alleyway that goes from the parking lot to Lacoona Plaza area. So are you going to do renderings of that? What's it going to look like? What's going to be in it? And it looks to me, from looking at the drawings, that it ends in a parking space, but that could be, I could be wrong about that.
No, it doesn't end in a parking spot. Right now, it comes through, and there is a, there's a covered walkway that goes across the entire front of this building here. And that, so that's where it ends. And then it turns and cuts through here. So that walkway is located back in this location here.
Oh, I thought the intent was to go to the, I guess that would be the west, you could come out through the west, the top of your drawing, keep going, you know, to the left. Yeah, in there, yeah.
Yeah, well, it goes to this, this connection here, this connection comes out to the sidewalk here, and then there's a walkway in front of the office building here.
There is a walkway there, okay. And are you going to do drawings that will show what that alleyway looks like? I think you just mentioned that you're going to have the plaques in that alleyway, was it?
I have a sketch, can I?
Sure.
Show a sketch.
And the lighting for that space?
I don't have the lighting laid out yet, but we did look at, because we were curious about that as well. So this is a view into that corner. And currently, what happens, and it's quite nice, is these columns continue through that. And then at the opposite end, there's a small return because the pattern of the columns changes at that end of the thing. So what we're, what we would propose to do is, again, this is a pier that would sort of end the retail facade, coming across the supermarket facade, and then come up with a series of information boards that run down along that corridor. And then we would introduce lighting, but we would need to engineer that lighting, so that's something that we'd have to work with the landscape architect on and get you some more information on that.
And how wide is that alleyway?
It's there now, it's in the, just in the walkway in the, and it's probably about nine, 10 feet wide.
Mr. Stevie, I'm going to need copies of those slides.
Again, I didn't intend to present those tonight, I just had them because we also were thinking about that.
And Mr. Stevie?
Yes?
Just as a point of clarification, well, one, appreciate the responsiveness to the concerns and questions that have been raised over the previous months. So I just have a couple of questions to be sure I'm fully understanding the current plan. So one, on the stanchions, some of them need to be either relocated, or the ones in the parking lot you mentioned would need to have concrete at the base to mitigate against automobile contact, et cetera. Will they need to be moved at all, or, you know, how will that concrete actually be added to those stanchions?
They would not need to be moved. And currently, right now, what's happened is, they're buried in concrete already. During the last renovation of the building into the shopping center, the bottoms of the columns were encapsulated in concrete on the fourth floors. So the columns actually go down below the concrete slab to the footings and foundations that they had, which we're assuming are still under there, but we don't know that for sure. The intention is, all of the columns that are in the parking area are existing columns in an existing location. All the ones that, the ones in between them that we had to take out, those are the ones that we're going to be repurposing elsewhere on the site. And then there'll be a few left over that we can talk about what's going to happen with them. They can be donated, they can be used elsewhere in other parks or in other locations on the project if we find more locations that we can use them. So the columns that are in the field remain in their existing positions. And what we would propose to do is, again, once selective demolition is done and we understand what's happening in the base of the columns, there would be a formwork placed around them and concrete poured into them to protect, so a car doesn't back into them.
Right. And you mentioned that the column count or stanchion count was reassessed and confirmed on-site again. As a part of that assessment, was there a quantification of the stanchions that fit into the original 1920 stanchions? Any adjustments or ones that were added in 1980? And then which of those two sets would be removed in the current plan?
I have an, can I show?
Sure.
I have another exhibit that I apologize.
Let's mark, can we mark the copies of the slides from the alley so I don't lose track of them? And then, then mark these as?
Alley slides will be 31.
And this column assessment will be A32.
So basically, what you see, this is a survey of all, I would identify these as the historic columns, the columns of the train sheds. All of the ones in blue are going to remain in place. The ones in orange are the ones that we're removing, and those are the ones that interfere with the parking and the drive-by also, the parking lot. So these ones would need to be removed. These would need to be removed. So there's a total of 16 to be removed, but I can just review the numbers. So there's a total of 98 columns in this diagram. 74 of those will remain in place exactly as they are, with these three, six, nine, 12 columns being repurposed into the light fixtures within the parking field. 24 of the columns will be removed, and as we speak, in the design, eight of those columns are going to be repurposed into the bus shelter and the entrance of the residential project on the east parcel.
Great, and that's consistent with the August 6 testimony as well?
That's correct.
Right, right.
So it just, that just confirms that.
Great. And there was a question about some of these being, I'm not sure of the wording, but completely from 1920, others having been adjusted in 1980 in some way, either superficially, or the edges having been trimmed, I believe, on the very top.
Pretty much, everything in this location was touched in some way by the 1980s. I take that back, I believe some of these were, are actually as they were.
Right.
Because the head of the train station was a little bit different from the tail end of the train station, which is out here. But all of these have been added to in some form to create the roof of the shopping mall that's there now.
But the prior testimony, though, was that there were actual whole columns that were added?
There, my observation, walking through the mall, and again, I wasn't able to get into every single storefront, but.
Boy, okay, well, then how did you do the accounting for what's in the storefronts then, if you didn't get in there?
These are, these are from the drawings, the historical drawings that we have of the shopping center, and then from observation, there's lines.
So what you're showing there, which is showing all of those, both colors, are from the historical drawings?
They're from the drawings from the shopping center conversion, but also.
Okay.
This is an exposed problem.
What, go back and explain to me, now you've entered, you're confusing me now. You talked about historical drawing, then you switched to shopping center conversion drawing, okay? So what did you take from the historical drawings?
The historical drawings that we have are the shopping center.
Right, I'm not asking you what they are, I'm asking you what did you take from those drawings?
This plan is from those drawings.
The plan, now, when you say the plan, do you mean the positions of all, or you just mean the base plan?
The base plan and the position of the columns are identified on this drawing.
So that's what the original plan showed?
That's correct.
Prior to the 1980 revision?
This is the 1980 revision.
Okay, I want to know, and we went through this at the last meeting, all right? And that's what really the question is following up on, what we went at the last meeting. There was testimony at the last meeting that showed two different types of columns. There was an original column, and then there was a different column that was a little thinner, it had different detail on, and the testimony at that time was that that was added in 1980 in certain places. And we asked, well, do we know where those columns are? What were the original columns? When I say original columns, I mean back when the train station was first built. I'm not talking about what was done on the renovation, what was placed there originally when it was being used as a train station, all right? And the answer in the last meeting was that we don't know. So the charge, or the request, was that we need an inventory of that, all right? Now, you're presenting this diagram of the locations of the stanchions, and what was there and what's being removed. I'm trying to understand, does this reflect, what does this reflect? Does this reflect what's there? Where, do we know where the columns were added? And are you changing the testimony now that that was wrong from the last time, or what?
No, I'm not changing that testimony. I'm telling you that I physically went to the site and I walked through the site. I identified this line of columns is completely exposed and visible.
Mm-hmm.
Each of these columns, I was able to determine, were part of the historical columns, the riveted steel columns.
Yes.
Of the original train station. There are some columns in this location that are not highlighted on this plan that were simulated columns, that were made to look like the columns of the train station, but they're not real columns. I was then able to take these and look through some of the retail stores and see that these column lines continued. I was able to identify that these column lines continued. I wasn't able to get into every single location in the storefronts.
So you don't know whether those are the original columns, or they're replacement columns that are in the same place that the original ones were?
I don't. I don't have any.
Mr. Chairman, I don't mean to interrupt, I'm trying to help. There's three, we know that there are three, what I will qualify as, I don't know if new is the right word, but every column is from 1912, 20, I'm sorry, I lost the date, except for three. They are identified on exhibit AR103, which I believe was marked as exhibit at the prior testimony, we're trying to get that up right now. And with that respect, I know that they are located somewhere in the vicinity of the head of the tracks, and one at the end of the skylights, whatever that means. So we're going to try and get that right now, that'll, I think that'll answer the question that we're struggling with right now.
Mr. Stevie, not to take away at all from what the chair is requesting, perhaps you could explain to the board, because other than the explanation that this is what you want to do, what is the difficulty of keeping the canopies with the stanchions and parking under that in a configuration similar to what Mr. Ross has proposed? What is the actual difficulty in doing that, such that you are instead proposing that the canopy roofs and concrete come off? Let's try and get to the heart of the matter here.
There's three?
Last week, I asked you, you said the signage was a problem, then you said that the. Then you said that the steel couldn't support the signage. Well, I didn't press you on that, but everybody knows that that steel is sufficient to support a sign that says supermarket in front. So why can't you keep the stanchions with the canopies and park the cars under that? That will help people understand why things have to come down, proposed, that you're proposing for things to come down here.
Well, I understood the testimony at the last hearing that the answer to that question comes down to the developer or whether the tenant, the retailer, does not want that type of canopy in front of their windows. But that, of course, and you've come up with...
Nobody said that, that was our supposition.
No, 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 that was part, that was one of the reasons. The other reasons about there being a question about the structure, well, we all know that's a question of engineering, all right? And we all know that, you know, even if you didn't, couldn't keep the original because it was in all places, because it wouldn't be possible because it's damaged or whatever, that it wouldn't be sound, that you could replace it and you could still have a coverage structure that could replace parts of it to duplicate it. But I think the real crux of the issue is, is that the tenant supermarket wants their front windows exposed and they feel that that canopy over those three rows of parking is going to obstruct their front windows. Now, is that the sum and substance of, is my understanding correct?
That is one of the things that you spoke about.
It's one of the things that you spoke about. And at the end of the day, everything else is really a structural engineering issue, which can be overcome, right? Mr. Stevie, right?
There are other issues.
Like what, that canopy overcome?
Well, the parking issue is one item.
What do you mean the parking issue is an item?
Again, one of the things that's important to...
If you're parking under a canopy, what's the problem? We park under buildings. So what's the problem with parking under a canopy?
It's not with regard to parking under the canopy. It's the formation of the parking spots.
The formation of the parking spots could be in the exact same, could be in the exact same configuration. It's just that it has canopies over it.
I have a question.
No, no, let's not, again...
Would you have to add more columns to make the continuous canopies? Or could you do it with the existing columns? That was my question.
That's all a question of how heavy the material is that you've got structured over these things. I mean, you have four in each row, you know? And, you know, I'm sure that's just really just a matter of engineering, again. So really...
Wouldn't it be simulated additional metalwork under there? And/or in some places had to lose? I still don't understand why we can't put a big supermarket sign in front of the existing canopies, maybe slightly modified here and there for whatever reason, that says supermarket right in front, that's held up by the steel that's holding up a canopy already, and park cars under there in some configuration to be determined? I just don't get that.
And see, maybe because I come from a different frame of reference, having worked for supermarkets for a while. I understand why a retailer would want to have their front windows exposed and not obscured and contribute to their presence, their street presence if they're doing that. I understand that. But, and regardless of whether I understand it or not, we need to understand the real reasons of what we're dealing with here, you know? And, you know, just be honest with us, be real about it. He's asking what the problem is. He's asking that question because you kind of danced around the issue.
So Mr. Stevie, if I can cut through, I think one of the things that you were going to say is possibly that since the time of the last planning board meeting, there may have been some consideration given to keeping canopies?
That's interesting testimony, Counselor.
Well, let me get to my point. And in the frame of investigating every potential avenue, even though to not contradict what we said before, it's not something that a tenant would want, so it's a problem. Did we have a conversation with somebody in the fire department in town?
Yes, we did.
And what was the essence of that conversation?
I did not have that conversation. My colleague, the engineering company, had that conversation. So I'd like them to tell you what they found out. But we did find out there was issues with keeping...
Very good. So now we've identified that there is some emergency access issue that may be impacted by having those canopies there. Then the question becomes, well, how many canopies need to be lost if that's the case? Do we make one bay back so that, but you see what I'm saying?
Right, and let's table that to the engineer.
Do we lose, can we maintain X and lose Y? This is the kind of detailed dynamic. But just to say, oh, you know, our prospective tenant, you know, doesn't want that, well, you know, is that the total deal breaker? Because again, you are asking us to knock down a federal, state, and locally designated monument for a tenant we haven't seen. Nobody's come forward and said, yeah, it's a deal breaker. Can't have, gotta have my windows here.
And I just need to state for the record, the testimony that was presented at the last hearing was not, or at least was presented by ours, and I believe was echoed by every other person who testified, was that there is no federal or state requirement that the interior mall remain in place or that the canopies or the stanchions that support the canopies cannot be removed. I just have to echo that.
Nobody said they couldn't be removed.
Well, that was, I definitely think that was the implication of what you just said.
And I'm not so sure that's the case anyway, but you are asking us to demolish a designated historic monument?
And again, the interior mall is not a designated historic monument pursuant to the testimony. Instead, you keep rephrasing...
Well, pursuant to what testimony? The testimony of your expert?
Of Dr. Stephen Bedford.
Who diminished the viability of it. The applicant's, the applicant's expert believes it's not a worthy monument. Well, you know, hallelujah, okay?
Again, I'm stunned.
Your counsel, you have to admit that your testimony isn't conclusive on the issue. You might want us to accept it as conclusive, but we've heard other testimony to the contrary. And we would be perfectly within our rights as a board to reasonably accept other testimony, at least to question what your expert said forth. Without getting any further into that argument, you know, because that's what it is. We understand that that's what your position is. But we are just trying to understand, again, what the issues are. Brass tacks, you know, because over the course of, we've been told, no, we can't do that, and then we can do that. And this whole proposal was discussed months ago, was brought up months ago, and it was rejected because we can't do it, I think, insurance reasons. We can't put stuff on the ground. It's, you know, and now all of a sudden we can. And it's not all of a sudden. It's after meetings and back and forth, and now we can. So we're just trying to understand in making our decisions, what are really the facts? And what are we really working with? What obstacles are we really working with? Are all of the stanchions, because of prior testimony of all the stanchions that we're looking at, are they indeed original stanchions? Or are some of them, you know, AD reproductions or AD substitutions? And, you know, we need to fully understand what the actual facts are because there's been some shift over the course of these proceedings as to what those facts are. Or what they've been offered, anyway.
Correct, and I think that's a little bit of what's contributed to the additional questions. And even looking at my agenda for March 12th, it is, you know, access to the tunnel, also talking about kind of staging for pickup and some things that we're just resolving now. So with regard to the stanchions not asserting a position or even an opinion with which ones stay or go, the question is simply to get a clear answer on which ones are from the original structure and which ones would be removed. What's necessary, I understand that may be a discussion. It's simply getting a clear answer to that question. And so that was the only piece that I was looking to establish there.
And so it appears that with respect to that piece, that your testimony is saying that all of the ones that you've indicated in goal to be removed are original to the train station?
Yes, train sheds.
And eight of those would be repurposed?
That's right.
Right, now, the one other piece is around uniformity or how standardized the other ones are in terms of condition. Because I see on the design, it looks very nice. You would have the light fixtures in the parking lot. But if, for instance, some of them have been cut back significantly, would all of them be cut back in your plan so that they appear uniform? Or how would you handle, well, one, I think, is how uniform are they in their current condition, first off? And then secondly, what would be your approach to standardize those that are remaining in the current plans?
And let me just piggyback on that. Based on what you've said already, you haven't looked at all the columns, right? So you're really not able to answer that question at this point in time?
I can't answer it perfectly, no.
Well, I mean, we want a perfect answer, okay? So if you can't, we don't want you guessing. And we don't want you to tell us one thing today and then have to tell us something else at the next hearing. So we would rather that you actually do the work and examine the material that's there and then come back with an answer for us at the next meeting. I would rather that because I, you know, I think it would be a better use of our time.
And just to clarify the context here as well, there was testimony given around the stanchions and the historic relevance. The testimony from that individual as well was that they do affect the context for the station, which was agreed to be historic. So it's not that this is purely superficial point. And at least as far as I'm concerned, I'm not saying which ones to keep or to leave. It's simply a matter of knowing which those actually will be. So there's another question that I had just around the striping on the parking lot now. One of the residents had a question at the last meeting around how they would be distinguished from crosswalks. Do we have examples of this type of coloring in other areas? And how have people dealt with, you know, people that may not have perfect vision not mixing those up for crosswalks through a parking lot? And if it's not an issue, that's fine testimony as well. I just would like to know what thought has gone into making sure that wouldn't be the case. And just to clarify, it's on which page? Nineteen, is it? Yes, nineteen? Yes, so just ensuring that if someone were to come out of the tunnel or from some other area and not be familiar with the fact that, you know, this is for cars, it would be a bit of a safety concern for myself, a small child, thinking they can just run along that path. If we've seen them in other areas and safety's not an issue, that's fine. I just wanted to get a sense of what thought's gone into the current design and concerns around issue, around safety.
Bruce, I'm not trying to give you the opportunity to punt, but I don't know if this is you or our engineer.
I think this is probably a site engineering question.
Got it, great, that's good. And then the last point was just around, on the site, I saw a couple X's on the same image. Are those the cart corrals in between? So see to the far left, there's a car at the top in white, and then there's two cars close to each other. So just beneath that car on the far left there, in the middle of the top-left image, is that for cart, shopping carts?
The engineer will speak to that. He's got a site plan that's perhaps a little clearer.
Great.
Is it also a question for the engineer? You've talked about different composition to make this pattern. And I guess it's not really a question that I'm asking, but for so much as a concern, I think that we would like to know, out of the options that are available, what's the most durable for the northeast? Where you've got weather extremes, you know, what's going to hold up the best?
Sure, and again, I think the engineer, that's a detail that we're going to have to work out with the engineer and the landscape architect as well, as to what the pattern's going to be and what the final material will be.
And, you know, and not to put too fine a point on it, but just going back, again, the reason why we're asking, the reason why I'm asking a lot of questions is because we've got to make a decision on this. And when we make that decision, I really want the record to be crystal clear as to what we're basing that decision on, what we're giving up, what we're not giving up, what we're doing and what we're not doing. Because, I mean, clearly, if we're going to move forward with this, it's going to require some degree of compromise. And really, we've been talking, all the things that we've been talking about is a question about how, of how much compromise we are going to be able to live with. So I want to understand exactly what we are compromising, you know, in making one decision over another.
I understand, and I appreciate that. And, you know, I also, I would ask you that when we did start discussing the idea of keeping the roofs in place, there were other issues that we had to investigate, one of them being discussions with the fire department, understanding what happens. What are the clearances under the column? Can, you know, if we do that, can they stay in place? And those are things that are evolving as we're looking into these things. And that's why, you know, I didn't start my presentation by saying I spoke with the fire department or the fire marshal, but it's part of the process that we went through or going through.
Yeah, just don't bury your lead, you know, going forward.
Sure.
Because, you know, a fire safety issue is a significant issue.
Sure.
As opposed to it won't support a sign.
And again, that was a discussion that we had last time, and we only mentioned that we would need to determine whether it could support the sign. I didn't say that it couldn't support the sign.
Right, and the emergency issue may dominate, but the question is, is there a modification to that where, you know, a portion of it has to come down? And that...
We have to understand what the issue is.
Right, that position hasn't been fully explored and explained. That's the bottom line.
And so we're going to move on. We're going to try and get to that position tonight. But before there, are there any other questions from the board?
Yeah, I do have one more question. So with the nature of grocery shopping changing, where people order online and pick up at a store, where's the pickup site for individuals? Is there a designated spot where people would drive up and pick up their stuff that they've ordered already?
Our engineer will speak about that.
Oh, okay.
I have a question.
I do the building, he doesn't say.
All right, okay, thank you.
Last, the height of each light fixture as well, the engineer?
Yes.
Okay, yes.
You've increased the size of the grocery store, how?
If I go back to an earlier... So...
I can't see it from there.
If you go to the Kirkpatrick store, the front doors, there's our rolling grills that identify the front of the store is out here. In our earlier contemplation, we talked about going back to the original wall of the...
So you pulled out the wall?
Yes, so what we've done is we've brought the supermarket out now to the center line of that column bay.
Okay.
And that's added the square footage. And then there's been some adjustments in the back of the building.
Right, I see that. So are you using the existing office building as part of it?
No.
Part of the grocery store, no?
No.
What about the area where the laundromat was? That was along the side of that alleyway?
Yeah, we had testimony about that earlier. That is sort of service area for this retail and for the office. There's actually a loading area for the retail component here, as well as the office area. There's a trash collection area. There's egress for the building. So that laundromat area has become a service area for the complex.
Okay. Other questions from the board?
Yes, as you're looking at Glenridge Avenue, is there any way that there could be a pathway through, if not through the supermarket, so that people who are walking on Glenridge Avenue have access without walking all the way around?
There's currently, the current path from Glenridge Avenue will be along here, along Grove Street to the stair and down, or through the front of the building and down the passageway that we talked about earlier.
Through the front of which building? They have to go all the way out to Lackawanna?
They'll walk along here to Lackawanna Plaza, the plaza space in front of the office complex and down through pedestrian area here.
So it's a full block with
Pedestrian connection, yes.
So there's no access between Grove Street and Lackawanna Plaza?
Grove Street and Lackawanna Plaza, there is connection right along here, along the front of the building and to the stairway right here.
I'm speaking on Glenridge Avenue?
Uh, no. It would be the public sidewalk.
And then the last thing, I was following the discussion and how we covered what we covered in our last meeting. And my understanding is that you do have, you mentioned that the plan that you've shown us here is from 1980, that when you're looking at what the stanchions are. My understanding is that you also have the plans from 1913 and that they can be compared and you can, by checking that, to see if there were any added and which ones they are. Is that correct, or am I?
I do not have the plans from the 1913 train station.
We have, there's historic photos, but there's no plans.
Oh, you don't have that plan? Okay.
Yeah, yeah. The 1980 plan was, I think it's what's been alluded to in terms of looking at the
Yeah, I know that you had that one. I was under the impression that you had the old plan.
Yeah. If that, yeah, I'm sorry, there was confusion on that, but there's no old plan.
Thank you.
I have another question. With the reconfiguration of the loading area, are, is there a loss of a parking space on Glenridge Avenue across from the post office because of that?
I'm going to defer that to my engineer.
Oh, okay.
Other questions from the board?
And there have been no changes to the east parcel, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Anyone else? Are there any questions from the public concerning this witness's testimony?
Priscilla Eschelman, 50 Label Street, Montclair. E.S.H.E.L.M.A.N. Yes. Mr. Stevie, have you walked to this site from the bookstore on Glenridge Avenue?
No.
Have you walked to this site from Glenfield Park?
No.
Have you walked to this site from Church Street?
No, I'm familiar with that one.
Thank you. Have you done a survey of pedestrians on any of these streets?
I have not.
I walk these streets 10 times a week, teeming with pedestrians. What I see is the creation of a gigantic pedestrian dead spot, and it's the crown jewel of our city. I'd like to understand, as a pedestrian, if I've walked from the building being built now, this is Willow Street, I believe, this is designed as a pedestrian area. A pedestrian comes down here, say they have a local tour guide that says, "I want to show you around town. I've got my little cart off Glenridge. We're walking through these little shops, these little shops that eat business." I now hear this corner. Tell me what kind of a train nut would want to go see a parking lot filled with stripes and try to envision it was a train station?
Well, again, I think that we are going to be making a very nice pedestrian plaza space at the intersection of Bloomfield and Lackawanna Place.
There's already one there.
Mm-hmm. And we're going to be enhancing that by putting the horse trough in that location with some historical signage. In addition, there'll be the pedestrian connection that carries through from Lackawanna Place to the shopping center. Again, we'll be making historical references with the plaques.
So I'm curious if you factored at all what the historic supermarket consultant said, which he said the sheds themselves could make a, quote, "phenomenally gorgeous" building. And instead, I see stripes in a parking lot.
Again, I maintain that what is there now is a building that turns it back on the street. We're proposing to open that and create a destination supermarket, something that I think that the neighborhood needs, something that the neighborhood's been asking for. And so, again, I think what we're looking to do is figure out ways that we can accommodate all of those things.
So I've been in this process for a year and a half since I've moved here. You've been doing this for four years? I don't understand why you're only now getting information about fire access. Are you factoring in Uber pickups? Where would that happen in your plan? If a pedestrian walks there and they want to take a car home, a car service home or a cab?
Actually, that question's probably for a different witness.
Fine. This feels like a game of whack-a-mole. I don't understand if, I mean, have you even considered what the historic consultant said? He said the scale and the idea of this access with the design is more suitable to an interstate. Have you tried finding
I'm not sure I agree he said that.
Have you tried even marketing this at the 25,000 square foot size he recommended?
Again, I don't want to engage in an esoteric argument, but I think the community has requested a grocery store for this particular area. We sought the compromise in many ways to provide that while paying attention to what's been said. And I realize not everybody's going to be happy, probably, at the end of the day.
I want a supermarket as well.
And that does go beyond the scope of what he's testified about this evening.
I just don't understand how we've thrown out everything the consultant said, which he pointed out that you could have the traffic coming in off Glenridge Avenue versus having it all being left turns off Grove Street. It's going to become a hellscape for pedestrians.
Again, that, again, that question, I think, is a traffic-related question, which I'm not trying to be evasive, but and also, I think I disagree that the consultant was, if you're referring to the supermarket consultant who came from Wisconsin, that he testified to that effect, literally.
I think that's verbatim.
We can agree to disagree.
Thank you.
Other questions from the public? Mr. Chairman, I actually thought that question about the 25,000 square foot marketing was a legitimate one, given the fact that we had prior testimony. I think they should, it's a simple yes or no. Right, but that's not what this witness testified about this evening. I mean, that was, that was a discussion at another meeting. And it's really not fair to the witness to bring this back up, since this is not what really he's discussing. And it was a question about whether it's been marketed. This is the architect. This is not the developer. So, Mr. Rebaki? Okay, all right.
Mr. needs to introduce himself?
Yes.
Yes.
Frank Rebaki, 398 Upper Mountain Avenue. Can we go to the, the diagram of the stanchions?
Yeah, I mean, that's, that'd be, you want to go into that, you got to bring back the other witness.
I believe this is the current Pig and Prince area, which I've talked about before. I believe there are stanchions that run along this wall, just so you know. And they're, they connect with the overhead skyline, just for the record. It actually helps your case as far as existing.
What was, what was that? I mean, we didn't hear any of that.
The diagram was omitted, several existing stanchions on the north side of the Pig and Prince space. That is the lowest level of these and others. Because it mimics this. And then there's a connecting stub between them.
Okay.
So my question from an architectural point of view, you showed it again, is why the parapet on the west retail facade? When you're, even now that you're extending the shed, why would you, with the brick parapet? And the reason why I bring that up is because there is some additional detail behind that parapet at the head of the same shed, as far as glass is concerned, that's still existing, historic glass. And I think it's actually in the historian's report, you can actually see a drawing of the historic glass.
Would you be able to see it from the parking lot?
You could definitely see it from the parking lot. You could see it from the Grove Street exit. You have existing photos in your package that show the detail, in addition to the appliques.
I'd have to go back and look. I'm not sure what's existing and what was original and what was not at this point.
I'm just questioning that detail. Do we need that detail for essential design? And I would ask, do we look at that?
Fair question. Did you get an answer? Because I don't know what I heard on.
No, no. The glass that's in question is at the head of the building, which I think is on the opposite side. It faces Lackawanna Plaza. So I think we could look at whether we take that parapet off. However, we were looking to present a facade that faced and squared off the the area in front, the retail facade.
And I know we're not doing sign plan, and I know we're talking about the visibility. We talked a lot about tonight in the previous meeting about the visibility of the supermarket establishment. And the reason why they didn't want, one of the reasons why they didn't want the cement roof system to remain. So my question is this. Is it possible to raise the parapet? Can you raise that higher? So the supermarket sign is higher? So that it could be visible? And the second question is, that goes with it, is landscaping plan, as I understand, the stanchions with the roof system is about 16 and a half feet tall altogether, maybe, give or take, a couple of inches.
At its highest point. At its lowest point, it's less, much less.
Yeah, the point from obstruction of the supermarket, I would go from the highest point.
Yes.
So I guess so anyway, so why can't we raise the sign? The other thing that goes with it, though, is previous testimony that shows up on your renderings, I know there's a landscape architect, is indicating that there are various trees, if you go to the next slide or the slide after that, that according to the plan and the type of trees they are, they're 20 to 35 feet high. If you have them characterized here about that. And if you go to the parking lot diagram, you could switch to the parking lot diagram. You can see, an idea of what you have is
Is that better?
Either one. Say you have trees in a plaza, you have the horse trough, you have the bus shelter. You have these high trees here, you have trees there. And I don't know, those are tight trees. But I don't understand if we have all those things blocking the storefront, what difference does it make whether there's some of these? Or are you taking out the trees? Or is that something you're going to re-present?
No, I believe, again, we'll have testimony from our engineer and, if we need to, a landscape architect about the tree heights. I don't know the heights of the trees or the species of the trees.
Okay. The other thing is the horse trough. Clearly, there's a considerable loss of historic fabric. I don't think anybody disagrees with that. The plan now is to relocate it in front of the former ticketing and waiting room of the station. Which I don't understand, because the historian that you testified earlier said how important it was about positioning and feel and that, on one hand, this would help the feel, but what it strikes me as is it makes the terminal seem more like a saloon. Only because you're putting a horse trough right in front. And you wouldn't have a horse trough in front of a terminal in any other case. So what you're going to be evoking of future generations is a saloon-type feeling. My question is, is there a better place? And would a better place also incorporate signage? Could we could you, any trough? Move it where you have the low sign here? And use it as part of the signage on it?
Secondary signage or the primary? It's an interesting idea.
At the corner of Grove Street, you have the, it's a red green of Grove Street. Street, Grove Street, what's the word?
Put the green area, put the signage on it.
Put the trough here, which is closer to where it was, would make more sense. You wouldn't have to winter after anywhere, but you'd take one side of it and use it for signage to keep it. You're going to put signage on it anyway, it's work. Keep the other side, maybe take some of the, salvage some of the good for it and use that on one face. And use new bricks with the signage on this side. It wouldn't go up very high. I don't know how tall it is. It's clearly can go higher than the, is that a possibility from a design point of view?
Again, I would only say that we would have to investigate all the different aspects of putting it in that location, because it's now a heavily trafficked intersection. So I don't, we have to be careful we're not blocking sightlines and things like that. So I think there's
Just want to raise the question.
There's merit to studying it, but it would have to be studied.
Okay. And then my last question, last two questions. The bus shelter is going to be approximately the same height as the existing shed stanchions? Or is that going to be significantly shorter?
At this time, it's going to be slightly shorter.
Slightly shorter, okay. And my last question is, you had talked about that walkway between the west parcel
Parking lot.
and the Lackawanna Plaza ahead of the train shed. On the site plan and other documents, there was testimony that there was going to be something like five or 6,000 feet of retail on the fresh floor of that building. You're suggesting that it's not going to be retail anymore?
No, I'm only suggesting that there's a pedestrian connection between there.
But there were going to be historic plaques that were going against that wall.
That's correct.
So it wouldn't be retail blocks.
Not on that location. I just testified that, and reinforced my testimony, that that area is service area to the retail center.
That's the only reason. You're saying it's service and the site plan says it's retail.
No, there is, there's, there's two separate areas. I'll go into here and go to this one. So right now, the area that we were discussing briefly was in this location here. In this location, which is the current location of the laundromat. That's correct. This, this is a pedestrian connection through here. There's retail in this location. The pedestrian connection, there's office here. And where the laundromat currently exists, which is right in here, is sort of back-of-house service area for the complex.
Mr. Rebaki, you are correct. It's technically identified as retail, and that's the, that's the use of this. But there's no current, actual proposed tenant use of it. But it is, for purposes of site plan, it is retail.
From a design point of view, your intention is to activate that with retail space?
It probably is difficult to activate, really, with retail space, but for purposes of identifying on a site plan, you, I was just pointing out, you are correct. It does say retail.
Okay, so that's something we need to resolve. That's all my questions.
Other questions from the public? All right.
Still ask a question?
Sure.
Just one more question. The concrete stairs that you're going to, you know, reactivate, right? So how, how tall is that?
How tall is the stairs?
Yeah, how many, how many stairs? How big is it? Is it, it's quite high, isn't it?
But currently, it goes above the sidewalk.
Yeah.
The stairs that exist there now are about eight or 10 feet above the sidewalk.
So with no back entrance, people are expected to walk from the north to the south, go along the side of the wall, go down those steps, do their shopping, come back with a couple of bags, walk up the steps, and then go back north. That seems unrealistic. I'm, you know, I'm, I'm going to say it again about we need a back door. I'm, you know, I'm going to say it again about we need a back door.
Good evening. William Scott, 23 Cedar Avenue. I just have a couple of questions. Are you familiar with the May 22nd resolution from the township of Montclair in regards to this application?
Yeah, Bruce, I don't know if you are. I am, but...
I guess I can ask a question of either one.
Yeah, well, yeah, probably really to him, but, but I didn't want to be, I didn't want to be evasive by having him say no, and then it's like, you know, we're making you seem like we don't know what you're talking about.
And the reason I pose that question, because, you know, obviously, the town council did support the site plans that were presented to the planning board at that point in time in that May timeframe. And I'm just wondering, the changes that you've made to this particular project, are they significant or are they in keeping with the site plans that were introduced in that May timeframe? I'm just trying to get a handle on, you know, what, what, what the amount of changes, if any, okay? I know that there's some changes trying to maintain some of the historical value here, but...
Sure. There have been changes to, or towards a compromise on the historical elements, and then the retail has been increased slightly from the May. The supermarket square footage has been increased slightly, and some of the building configurations have been modified slightly.
But you're saying slightly, we're not talking major changes of, your plans are still pretty much in keeping with that recommendation from the town council?
I believe so.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Other questions from the public? Council, next witness?
Certainly. So we have Mr. Kevin Webb from Lang and Engineering, who previously has testified and is, I believe, still under oath, but we could swear him in again if you want.
Can you swear upon that testimony you're about to give in this matter of truth and double truths and nothing but the truth? I do. Kevin Webb, W-E-B-B. Thank you.
Mr. Webb, before we get started and for just, I guess, a matter of housekeeping, you have a PowerPoint presentation, which I believe is...
Just one exhibit.
Just one exhibit, and it's, is this, it's been slightly modified from the exhibit that was submitted to the board?
It's just a, really a simplified version. Obviously, the site plan that was submitted is somewhat busy with information. We've just stripped some of that away to make a better visual for the purpose of this hearing.
Mr. Tally, I guess what I would, going to suggest or recommend is possibly made, we'll mark this as A33 Simplified Site Plan.
I got it.
Yeah, it's a site plan exhibit prepared by Lang with today's date.
Can you give me a copy?
Yes. Yes, we have it electronic. So this is a matter of a few housekeeping items relative to some of the changes that we have made that are specifically pertinent to the application, as was mentioned, I just want to put some of these numbers on the record officially. As was mentioned previously, we have adjusted the grocery footprint. The new grocery footprint is now 47,786 square feet. That's approximately 4,291 square feet greater than what was previously proposed.
So what was the motivation for that increase? I think that was asked earlier. Could you just describe what the reason for that was?
Well, not the motivation so much as, the rationale behind it is that by virtue of maintaining the existing line of columns at the existing storefront today, it affords an opportunity, if you will, to add to the grocery footprint, otherwise we really have a dead space between. So that, that's really the full crux of the rationale for the change.
Can I ask a question? Do you have, by way of comparison, the square footage of the King's Supermarket up on Montclair, the Whole Foods on Bloomfield Avenue? So we, we have an idea of what we're comparing this size to?
I do not, no.
We can probably get back to you on that.
As part, and frankly, as a result of that change in the grocery store footprint, we have also modified the number of parking spaces. The main parking lot on the West Parcel, the total number of spaces provided there is 200, that's 26 spaces less than the 226 that was proposed previously. So the total for the project, we are now proposing providing 478 spaces. That's 461 that serves this project. If you recall, several months ago, we had to explain why the TD Bank property was included as part of the application. We were doing some work on the area at the corner that is controlled by TD Bank. So in a sense, the TD Bank's parking, although not changing, is included in our number. So there's 478 provided, 461 if we were to exclude those dedicated to TD Bank. That's against a requirement of 832 spaces, and that number excluding the TD Bank demand is 817. So we are obviously still in a variance condition as we were previously. As Mr. Stevie had mentioned, so we have a number of existing columns proposed to remain in place in the parking lot. 12 of those are to be adapted in place with the light fixtures. We're approximating the mounting height of those light fixtures to be approximately 16 feet. We still have to make a full engineering evaluation of whether or not lights in those locations alone will be enough to satisfy the ordinance requirements and the tenant requirements for light on the ground. There is a possibility they need to be supplemented in some way, so we will be able to provide those details in the future. But I think that our primary focus at this point is trying to understand how to best utilize those columns in their place and to get some specific utility out of them to not have a series of redundant structures within, redundant vertical structures within that parking area. You know, the question arose before about why can we not keep other columns? And to put it simply, the columns that we have in place are those that are compatible with proposed parking layout. The, the columns are generally on a 40-foot grid. If we were to try to maintain all of the existing columns in their current places, a great number of those which we are currently slated for removal would end up in, in the parking aisles, in the actual drive aisles themselves. We looked at evaluated ways that we could perhaps do, as was suggested by Mr. Ross, do angled parking underneath those, essentially the canopy areas that would be covered in that case. Doing so results in a couple of things that are ultimately negative to the project. One is we'd have to, to do the angled parking, obviously, we'd have to go to one-way parking circulation aisles. We feel that the failure to provide two-way aisles is a significant decrease in efficiency in the usage of the lot itself. And secondarily, perhaps, shall I say equally important, we would lose somewhere between 10 and 20 additional parking spaces to accommodate that movement, even if we were to utilize the one-way parking configuration. For those reasons, we have viewed those as not a viable solution. As Mr. Stevie mentioned and showed in his exhibit, we are considering a variety of pavement treatments in the parking area. As Mr. Gilmer had questioned, we had actually provided testimony some time ago, I myself gave testimony, that one of the concerns of the tenants and me frankly, as a design professional, is that there's a concern that we can create a very confusing environment for both pedestrians and for cars by having too many conflicting patterns, colors, et cetera. Frankly, I'm not sure that I know how to do that in such a way at this point by providing, we're trying to pay a good faith effort to provide the pavement markings in such a way that won't usurp the traffic safety markings that are required both for parking spaces, handicap spaces, and pedestrian crosswalks. Frankly, still at this point, that's still to be determined about how we can prioritize that with, and utilize appropriate pavement treatments for the, for the track or the rail memory strips, if you will, versus the primary function of the parking lot. In any case, obviously, we know that the parking lot striping, particularly for the accessible parking space in the crosswalks, really has to take prominence, preeminence over the memory strips, if you will. So that's a significant part of our evaluation in terms of products. And Chairman Nguyen had also mentioned some other things that we had expressed before about durability and other things. Obviously, certain treatments are more likely to be, to survive in the environment that we have here, particularly on a, on a highly and densely used site as this. So those are all considerations for us to consider as part of that selections. But at this point, again, we're showing the sort of a range of options that we have, will be considering. If the board has some specific, or their professionals have some specific recommendations, we'd certainly take those under advisement. One of the things that's actually not shown on this plan, but we certainly would agree to, was in Mr. Tally's letter about expanding the existing taxi ride share area that's in front of the grocery store now from 55 feet to 60 feet. That would allow three, approximately three vehicles to queue in that area. We have also slightly reconfigured the grocery loading area from even what was previous, the prior, shall we say, trial balloon that we had shown a couple of meetings ago. Specifically, I want to point out that we have done so with the design team of what is most likely the prospective tenant who will end up here, assuming this project moves forward. And we spent a good amount of time in detail with their store designers and with their logistics folks to be able to come up with what I'm satisfied is a plan that I can say to you satisfies their requirements and also, from my perspective, satisfies the requirements of, from an engineering perspective, about traffic movements for the, for the vehicles, for the tractor trailers coming in and out. Specifically, there are four loading docks proposed. There's a six-foot ramp. There's a space for a compactor pad. This reconfiguration, similar to the prior iteration of that, shall we say, that trial balloon version, there is a portion of the existing grocery store, a little over 1,800 square feet, that is required to be demolished and is offset in part due to a small addition of a little over 1,000 feet.
Sir, before you jump on to this other area, could you just reiterate, because you're presenting a lot of good information here, very dense? Could you, am I clear that you effectively said that the use of this existing stanchions and canopies, if a reparking, reconfiguration was worked through, would result in the loss of between 10 and, and how many spots?
20.
Between 10 and 20 additional spots? And there, and then you also mentioned that the, the use of the canopies in that configuration would then require one-way circulation and that that was not the optimum for the site in, in your opinion? Is that the...
It is. I think it would be a significant loss in efficiency in the site.
So what you're essentially saying, to get to the essence, is that you are losing the canopies because of a potential loss of 10 to 20 spots and because of the circulation, the one-way circulation? Is that, is that correct?
Well, those are my site engineering reasons, absolutely.
Okay, okay, that's what...
Now, I can further support that to answer one of the questions that was posed to Mr. Stevie before. In our discussion, it was my office, we had discussions with the fire official, who said unequivocally that by no means would he allow any of the canopies to extend over the drive aisles. So in no cases would drive aisles allowed to be covered with any such covered structure.
All drive aisles or, or is just one bay required, for instance, to get, get vehicles down to the face of the building? Could there be some, or you may not be able to answer that.
I can't answer for him, but the guidance he gave us was all of the drive aisles.
All right. So your testimony here today is that repeating third, from a third-party testimony, who's not here, that the fire department would not allow any canopies to, to survive with vehicles going underneath? Is that, is that what you're saying here?
Within the drive aisles. I don't know that we pose such a narrow question as to say that any parked cars couldn't necessarily be under the cover, but certainly within the drive aisles.
When you say drive aisles, could you define that?
The cartway between the parking spots.
Okay.
The circulation aisles through the parking.
Did they give, did they give a reason? Was it height or just, just a blunt getting out?
Well, I think it's most specifically about height, but the concern about any impediment, you know, in the way, in an emergency situation, I think height's the foremost, but again, having to specifically navigate some unique circumstance at a time of emergency.
But you didn't review, for instance, if one bay on one side could be taken out and another bay on another site and so that it could get emergency vehicles down? You didn't, you didn't review those alternatives in, in the context of this?
He was clear that it would be over all access aisles.
Okay.
We did not press him further to say, well, what if this or what if that?
Very good, okay.
I have a question with, when you increased the size of the store, that means we lost 26 parking spots?
It does, because previously, the line of the storefront was some, approximately 22 feet farther back, which means that the, everything related to that storefront, because we had oriented this drive aisle here in the same approximate location relative to the storefront, so there's another 20 feet there. We've got two rows of parking spaces that we, we've lost as a result of that change. So it's not, it's a little bit of a focus, focus quiz here, just, you'd almost have to see the two side by side, but, you know, this line where we're showing the proposed storefront very closely mimics the existing storefront before, that line was actually farther back, farther to the north. And so we had filled that area, the extension of the curb line and the extent of the car parking was also that 20 some feet farther north.
Is that including the glass that was, was glass working, that was the front of the supermarket? I'm not quite sure how that relates to sign, to that, to the head.
I'm sorry, I, I'm not quite sure what testimony you're referring to. I'm afraid I was not actually here at the last meeting.
I was just trying to figure out, you've added to the front of the supermarket, and before I remember, we were talking about glass in front of the main part of the supermarket as a sort of a foyer to the supermarket?
I think there was a possibility that that could be. What we've done now is taken all of that area forward and incorporated into the supermarket proper.
Okay, so it's prop, it's not anything in front of the supermarket anymore?
Correct.
Okay.
So if I may, just want to provide a few more details and a little more color on the revised loading dock. So you can maybe barely make out, this is the line of the existing building line today. So we've taken off a portion here, we've added a portion here. And as I had discussed in prior testimony, the real function of this building removal is to try and to increase our distance from the face of the loading dock to create what would be a modern truck work that's certainly more generous and more appropriate than what was there for the, serving the existing path mark. What we've done and how we've set this new building line is we've set from the corner at its closest point here to the point of our property line here, we've maintained 135 feet. So that's essentially a 60-foot or 55-foot loading space and the rest is circulation aisle and turning movements for those vehicles. The reason I make a point out to the property line itself, as you may recall from prior testimony, our property actually has access rights over a portion of the neighboring property through an access easement. There is another approximate 10 feet from our property line to the nearest parking space, and in certain cases, near where the, the entrance to the underground parking, where I'd say the lower level of the parking garage and the upper level of the deck, there's even more. The reason the 135 is significant is because based on discussions with this potential tenant, who we've been working on design with, is they require only 130 for any of their sites from loading dock door to the nearest constraint or obstruction on the far side, whether it be a curb or some other obstruction. So we're in excess of that, and 135 feet is something that is significant because it's not only, say, do we find it for a loading dock door for a grocery store, but even for a distribution warehouse for any large, you know, million-square-foot warehouses use the same 130 or 135 feet from loading dock to the adjacent curb. So I'm confident that based off the design parameters that we've been given from the end user, their own logistics company's data about turning movements, that that 135 feet is more than adequate to provide service for their 53-foot trailers, which are the largest permitted on the road, without negatively impacting either Glen Ridge Avenue... impacting either Glen Ridge Avenue or the neighbor's property. Just now, you had asked a question before about, in your letter, about the grass paver area. We have proposed that grass paver area, and we had done so in a prior version too, it's slightly different in this case, as a nod to the neighbor's request to identify a specific area for snow removal and stockpiling. That is up to the board's discretion, whether or not they feel that that's a priority, or if they feel like in that area. I know you're, there's a corollary concern, I think, about screening of the loading area. It's not reflected here in detail. This is the area where the compactor is. We can certainly find a way to screen the compactor in general. And you had a question, which I interpreted as finding some way to do a screening wall in this area to screen at least as much of the loading area as possible. I think we can agree to that.
Mr. Webb, can I ask you a question? Is the loading dock area covered?
It is not.
It is not.
So, all the shaded area on the diagram?
Is, just concrete?
Is exposed?
Yes.
And so, just, so what is in front of it, from the, if you're looking at it from the sidewalk, are you looking at the loading dock?
You're looking at the loading dock, except for the portion here, which is some combination wall, or maybe wall and landscaping, or certainly, the green space that's in here is landscaped as part of the current plan and then would be, you know, modified according to this revised plan.
I have a question. Can you extend-
Can you extend a screening wall to cover the length of the loading area?
And the reason is, it's really access from this spot. For this, for a truck to exit this spot, they need this area here for their turning movements, for their trailing movements of the tractor-trailer.
Can you show that to me one more time? I wasn't looking.
I'm sorry. This area, which is between where we're showing our proposed curb line and the edge of the apron, and I would presume you're trying to get this area covered by a screen, whether it be vegetation or a wall. When the truck exits this space and then turns back onto Glen Ridge with the idea of leaving via Grove, it can make that maneuver, it can make that maneuver, based on the data we have from the operator, without impeding traffic on the north side of Glen Ridge. But to do so, its trailing movement of the tractor-trailer wheels as it swings out to do that uses all of this area. So, we have extended that island, if you will, as far west as we can without impeding the turning movements.
So, essentially, you could put in a screening wall to cover, screen maybe one-third of the trucks that are there?
I would argue 40%.
Okay.
A portion of it, yes.
My concern is because you're bringing it closer to the street with this redesign, before it was much farther away. Here, it's, what-
Right next to the sidewalk.
Yeah, it's 15 feet from the sidewalk, is my concern. And that's why I really, I think it would work if you screened it effectively.
That's all I have.
Oh, and actually, just one follow-up question from, I think the chairman asked this of Mr. Stevie, and didn't want to lose it. There was, I think the broad question was, do we have enough handicap spaces?
Oh, we do. It may not be evident from Mr. Stevie's exhibit, and certainly not from this, there are four here, as you identified, Mr. Chairman. There are also three on this side, so there's a grand total of seven, which meets the required standards.
And I think I had asked, is there a dedicated area for people picking up groceries that they may have ordered online, that they can pick up? How would that work?
Not at this point. The, I mean, that's really going to have to be something that we work out with the tenant, once they're officially signed on, about how they would manage some of those spaces. Perhaps they might dedicate a couple spaces and sign them, you know, for that express purpose. We have identified in this area, which that's what I made reference to before, we're going to have three, the length of three parking spaces. That's really more for, I would say, pickup and drop-off of people, not necessarily-
Like an Uber, or a Lyft, or a taxi?
Exactly.
Yeah, yeah.
Might I make a suggestion, and I don't know how this would necessarily work, if it could work, but you've got, you've got that landscape strip that's running from the corner, and you've got pavers, and I'm assuming that it's relatively safe to bring a screen to the point where the pavers start to arc?
Sure.
Maybe that could be plantings. Maybe that could be hedges, or the, I don't know, barber viti, or whatever, that are close, planted close together, that perform, that give you a solid green screen along there that tie into the landscaping rather than a wall that's, you know, maybe, it might be high enough, I don't know how high we could even put a wall there, but, you know, again, it would be kind of hard and stark and-
Well, I think it could be, it could, really, I think it's the best buffer for noise, and it could certainly be softened by landscaping between the wall and the sidewalk.
Mm-hmm.
You've seen them at large shopping centers and large grocery stores, they do have masonry walls that effectively-
But how high would they be? How high would that wall be?
It probably had to be 15, it'd be like an extension of the building, 15 feet tall. So, however, the height of 10 feet tall? I don't know the answer to that. How high's a tractor-trailer?
We don't, we don't have a, we don't have any in this particular, because it's a wall and not necessarily part of the building, we don't have any limits or restrictions on how high the wall is.
I think that it would be seven feet, create a variance. It would be a variance to have just a wall that's higher than seven feet.
Yeah.
But again, I-
Tom?
What?
I have a question. Have you accurately surveyed the location of that culvert that runs along Glen Ridge Avenue alongside the site?
I believe so, yes.
You've actually surveyed and located that culvert?
Well, we've surveyed, I guess I don't understand, based off of the information, the, you clearly feel that there's something in that-
Have you physically surveyed and located that culvert out there?
We have it all, we have surveyed all the available access points to it.
Right, but have you actually surveyed, what you can't see, have you surveyed?
Well, we, no, because we, there's no access to it.
There's no access to it, from any point?
We have surveyed it at the locations where there is grade-level access to it, yes.
So, how do you, then how do you know how close the wall is of that culvert? Do you know the thickness of the wall? Do you know how close that, the outside edge of the wall is to the area where you expanded the building? Do you know how close the top of the culvert is to the surface of the ground in front of the building? Do you know if the culvert can take, putting up a screening on top of it? If it has to be some sort of masonry and it's going to be 10, 12 feet high?
Well, again, here to fore, we haven't proposed a plant, you know, a wall that was that high.
Well, you proposed the building right there.
Understood.
And in my, the plans are very sketchy on the location of that culvert, as it wraps, as it goes down Glen Ridge Avenue and wraps around to the, even in front of your, even alongside the residential building, and-
It's not shown.
There are meet-and-balance descriptions of the easements, so you've got a culvert on the south side of the building that doesn't even appear to be within the easement. So, I think there's a lot more detail required before you can safely say the building should be located where it is.
If you or the other members of the township have information, we've asked-
I don't have the information, that's-
I understand, I understand the burden's on us, but to the extent that there's anyone that the township has information, we're willing to evaluate it and put it in the context of the information we feel verified.
Well, so, you really are just going off of old surveys for locations of the culvert?
And every place that we could identify through grade level.
So, Tom, specifically, what are you, what would you be requiring of the applicant?
I would suggest that they actually locate the culvert to make sure it's not going to conflict with any of the structures that are proposed there.
And that means going down in it and sending a camera or something like that?
They have to do that, if they can, if they can sight the wall, if they can sight the inside of the walls and, or if they have to take some test borings.
Yeah, I think you have to be very specific as to what is going to, you're going to require to satisfy you, so that-
An as-built survey.
Of the, that would be, this is for the existing building?
Well, they're moving-
Existing culvert.
They're expanding the wall there, so that's what, that's why he's questioning it.
It's just looking like it's very close. You're going to put some, well, if you look at the-
Why don't they just daylight the whole thing and make it easy?
It goes under the bill.
It's a joke.
There's some people who weren't joking about that.
That's why I said it.
We're looking at the survey.
That was for you, Jamie.
... on the plans you have. This is, this is just the inside of the, of the building. It moved this out very close to the edge of the wall. And this is all, there's no, there's no evidence that this is the actual location of the culvert. And you may be fine, but I just don't-
So, if we can establish that you'll work with Tom to get him whatever specifics, he needs to be comfortable that there's not going to be a problem here, and you guys can discuss how that's done most efficiently.
In fact, the note on your plan says approximate location of underground culvert. And I think you're moving pretty close to it, where I think you want more than an approximate location of the culvert.
As Chairman suggested, we'll certainly agree to work with you, and means and methods on how to verify it.
GPS thing.
I don't know, but I'm assuming it's sizable enough, they want to make sure that the wall doesn't sink, and stay, you know. Oh, anything else, Tom?
No, that's, it's pretty much it, just easier to deal with it now than when they start construction on the building.
I wanted to ask you about the wall along Grove Street and the stairwell, and how that is all proposed and the drawing that we have, because when I look at the actual existing condition, the wall there, you know, we have testimony or that the stairs are at least 10 feet above the grade.
And they gave, or maybe six or seven feet above each other's side, won't they?
Well, it looks like it's, there's a, there's a street sign there that's, and I'm sure that street sign is over six foot tall. And the top of the wall is higher than the top of the street sign. And the drawing that we have, rendering that we have, you know, has people on it, and they're kind of suggesting that the top of somebody's head would be at the point where the Xs are, where there's space. And is there a plan to alter the height of the wall at that, along Grove Street, or are you expecting that to be in existing unaltered condition?
I'll say two things. One is, I'll qualify that, that's really, I don't want to throw you back to someone else that has more of an architectural question. The second, the second part of that is, I think, you know, we're evaluating the way to actually essentially lower the effective height of the wall so that you can engage the site from the street without it being a barrier.
So, the idea is to do it, you don't know whether you can do it?
Oh, well, I-
You say you're evaluating it, so-
We can do it as a matter of design and engineering, as suggested.
So, what, so what are you evaluating? Exactly how you will do it, that it is going, I'm not clear on what you're answering.
It will be done. I don't know what you're asking.
Let's, let's bring the architect back up, and so we can address this question. Because he said that he was the building and you were the site. I thought this was the site. It's not, so, so, okay, so-
John, is this what you're looking at?
Yep.
This is the-
Yep. So, what's going on with the wall?
Well, it is going to be reduced in height from what it currently is to a more manageable dimension. I don't have the drawing in front of me to tell you what that dimension is.
Okay.
But it is on one of the architectural plans that we submitted, the dimension of the wall from the street.
And I believe you testified that it was going to be pierced so that it would be, people walking by would be able to see through it.
Well, it has, it has an X pattern piercing at the top, that the pattern that they have on the rendering mimics that. I don't know whether or not they're intending to use what's there and cut, cut and paste, or whether they're going to knock it down and put something new? Again, if I can refer you back to the architectural package that was submitted? Right, and understand, okay, I looked at that architectural package how many months ago? So, I'm, you know, yeah, it's there, but, but, yeah, I'm not, I'm not saying that it's not there, but tell me what you're going to do with it. My intention is that the wall will get cut down to a height, and again, I don't know the height off the top of my head, it's in that drawing. And then, the open X bracing will either be reused or recast and placed on top of the wall. So, the wall is going to be-
So, that detail is in the drawing?
Yes, it is.
That it's either going to be reused or recast?
That's correct.
Okay. Do we have any other questions from the, of the engineer, with respect to his testimony from the board?
So, Mr. Webb, just had a question around the length of the taxi and ride-share area. Is it possible to increase the length of that expanse right now? I think it's 50 feet now.
Yeah, we, it's one of the comments section of plans, that it's an expanse of 60, and we agreed to do that.
Great. And then, similarly, so, we mentioned, you know, grocery pickup, maybe you were speaking to this as well, but even just a separate staging area for like taxi and Uber pickups, would that be possible by designating parking positions for that, or is that taken into consideration in the current plan?
I mean, that 60 feet is dedicated for those taxi and Uber spaces.
Right.
Rather than dedicate, well, I'd say in-lot positions for those at this point, which I don't know how the, it would be interpreted, whether or not those would be spaces that count or not. Obviously, we're trying to maintain the maximum number of available spaces for patrons of the store, you know, absolutely to the maximum. So, relative to, just pick up question, again, I think that's going to change depending on, or depend on who the ultimate tenant is and what their program for having those sorts of programs are. Relative to moving those spaces, again, we're trying to preserve as many in-place spaces as possible with general.
The per-
I'm sorry.
I was going to something else, so yes, go ahead.
What is the per thousand count that you are working with now, given the revised square footage?
Well, it's, it's a shared parking analysis, so there's not a one, a certain ratio per thousand. It's, it's a combined shared parking analysis.
Well, no, you start off with the requirement, because you're asking for a variance.
No, we are. I misunderstood the question then.
My understanding is that there are, the employee parking is going to be assigned to the east lot, is that still correct?
That is. I mean, that's going to be part of our more specific parking testimony at future hearing. That's correct, in general.
So, you're not, I guess my question was, I'm still trying to keep the count in terms of what the supermarket needs and what that west parcel needs. And I was trying to figure out exactly how much of a variance we have left if you move part of the parking to the east, part of that requirement to the east lot.
On this topic, I'm going to envision that we're going to have quite a bit of testimony and questions, that, because it gets complicated quickly. I mean, we can, there's obviously the baseline question, which is, what does the existing ordinance require, and then there's all of the variety of issues, one of which you just identified, where do the employees park, and then how does that work in the shared analysis, and how does that work in every other facet?
And in terms of the parking variance, I believe it says, it was stated in my memo, that it's for 354 spaces.
Correct.
That's the variance request. What we'll get is testimony and how you'll address it.
That's correct.
Regarding pedestrian access to the west parcel parking lot, so, I think this image should work all right. So, coming- So coming in and off of Grove, right now it seems like there's, and we mentioned this before, but just on this plan, it seems like there's not a sidewalk. If you don't take the stairs and you continue southbound on the west side of Grove, there's no pavement coming into the parking lot. Is that correct?
That's correct, there's-
Or no sidewalk?
The pedestrian walkway continues across the driveway but not through the driveway.
And it's a really tricky thing here because I understand why you would not want to encourage that movement. At the same time, I could imagine a lot of people taking that route rather than going all the way down and back around through the other end of either the parking lot or the sidewalk. I'm not sure exactly how to address it, but is it even possible to have a sidewalk on either side of that curb cut access to the parking lot on Grove? Given like the grade and, yeah, how steep it would be?
It is, we have actually set that driveway, it is the steepest part of the parking area.
On the image, it looks pretty steep, yeah.
We have to evaluate it to whether or not we can have what I would call a sloping sidewalk, something that doesn't require handrails or would not be a ramp per se in that area. Furthermore, in that area, this goes to another case where any area that we give up to accommodate even for pedestrians results in another loss of a parking space. I'm not suggesting that's not appropriate if the board feels that that pedestrian movement takes priority over that extra parking space, but it does come at some cost to the site.
And it was of significant interest to the board and also the community, the access to the tunnel, which we understand has been for the most part resolved. And then we've mentioned access to Glen Ridge to the, to the grocery store. And so even if that's not an option, I think that's something we should seriously consider. So if possible, it would be great to hear future testimony. And it may be whoever comes and testifies about traffic and movements, but that's something that would be great.
Yeah, and, and to be clear, I think there's a way, again, if it was deemed a priority from the board, we could find a way to engineer it appropriately.
Right.
Whether it be a sidewalk, a sidewalk with rails or some combination of a ramp or something to make up the grade change. But again, it would come at the cost of a parking space, a, a minimum of one, I'd say.
Yes.
But we, we can evaluate.
Okay, great, thank you. And then, so we can table this for now if it's not worth addressing, but there was also a mention in the note around the coloring for the handicap parking spaces overlaid on top of the coloring for the tracks. Can you comment on the feasibility now or is it best that we discuss later?
I, I would say it's a challenge. Clearly, we know the accessible spaces, for instance, are blue, whatever we're gonna propose, it's not gonna be blue. I mean, there would be some differentiation. But as I mentioned before, I think we have to be extremely careful to not create a confusing environment. And that's, as I suggested before, I actually gave prior testimony on that as a rationale why not to do it.
Right.
Because it can create a very confusing environment both for pedestrians and frankly even for, for motors.
Right, yep. And then the last point was just around the cart corrals. I think they're noted on here clearly enough, I just wasn't seeing-
Yeah, they are, they're-
With the Xs, is that right?
Correct, yeah, so they're in line in this area. I think that's the right, I can't even see where- Yes, that's the area.
They would be there, and then were there any in the southern portion of the parking lot?
There are not, and that's something that, we actually have more cart corrals now than we had as part of the original plan, but they are distributed less so around the parking areas specifically because this is area, this is how we can make, minimize the loss of parking to maintain the locations of the stanchions. Basically, the, that bay of, that we have that's defined by the columns is such that it's not a perfect match between parking space dimensions. And this is the way we can actually put that extra space to good utility. But they are not as distributed as, as, as well, I would say, as they were on the original plan. But we do have a significant greater number of them.
And similarly, would we, I just, I'm not familiar with exactly what it will look like underneath the east parcel building and the tunnel there. Do you anticipate that shopping carts would find their way into the east parcel parking lot as well?
We do, we've actually identified a car corral in that podium level as well.
And I, where would that be?
I think it's on the architectural's plan, architect's plan for that defines that parking level.
Okay.
I have a question related to that.
Yes.
'Cause I did note that your cart, your cart corrals are much closer to the building. Would it be possible to have some type of control eliminating the ability to take the carts off of the property? I've seen other grocery stores do that, so you don't have the carts, you know, halfway down the block.
Your tenant's gonna wanna do that because Montclair loves to find you for those, for those carts.
And is that something you would show on a site plan? You know, I don't know, a label or, that's more of a management?
Yeah, yeah, 'cause the systems, it's, it's, you know, they have different kinds of electronic systems, but I don't think it's anything that really goes on the site plan.
Okay.
It depends on what system they choose to implement.
Okay.
It is, so just in my own experience though, and if it's out of scope, it's out of scope. It does create significant congestion when you have these automatic locking wheels, 'cause they pile up around the perimeter very quickly. So just, when we have parking testimonies, if there's any testimony to give there, it would be great to hear about how that may work or if they will simply let, you know, what the options are would be great to hear.
Okay, so noted, thank you.
Any other questions from the board?
Oh. We have, our traffic engineer is here tonight. Mike, you wanna speak or have a question?
The board is done with their questions, I would guess I would go next.
Um, are, are you done? Okay, yes.
Joe Fischinger was not able to make it, but Mike Danamiller from his office was able to make the meeting tonight.
That after.
If I need to be sworn in?
I think so, this is-
Yeah, raise your right hand.
Absolutely.
Do you swear or affirm a testimony about giving us matters, the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Say your full name for the records, spell your last name.
Michael Danamiller, spelled D-A-N-N-E-M-I-L-L-E-R, I'm principal engineer at MB5.
And a traffic expert, I suppose.
That I am, that is how I've spent my career.
All right.
Okay.
Any objection, counsel?
No, no, no objection.
You may borrow away.
Great, thanks. My questions are simple. Truck turning templates for the loading zone, have they already been provided or if not, when will they?
Not for this revised configuration, they have not.
Okay, I had a couple of questions that would be answered with that, but maybe you can address them anyway. There's four parking spots in the loading area?
Correct.
If there's a truck in one, blocking that one, does that prohibit access to the others?
No.
Great. Is the drop curb, now I think you answered this one, the drop curb required for the full length along Glen Ridge? I think that was a definite yes. You said the right turn from the first move, you need that drop curb the whole way?
That's correct.
Okay, will it be concrete sidewalk the whole way?
There, there's a depressed curb and concrete apron.
Okay, so it's not asphalt for pedestrians, it is reinforced that trucks are crossing a pedestrian space?
Yes.
Okay, good. Is there any bike parking on site?
We do have bike racks, I don't think they're clearly shown on this exhibit, but we have identified locations for bike racks.
I'll actually ask Janice, doesn't Montclair have a ratio?
No, we don't.
I had heard some kicked around when you did your complete streets.
We did, it was not adopted.
Okay, so out of the goodness of their heart, they're providing, it's not a hard requirement? Good.
But they are providing that, yeah.
Okay, and- Grove Street, the exit from the parking onto Grove Street. There was talk of, right now it's one lane in, one lane out. The left turn move onto Grove North could prohibit, maybe this gets tabled to parking circulation for next time? Okay. That's all my questions.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Ross.
You've already been sworn in, right?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, borrow away.
And all of you know Mr. Ross is our planner. And so that's why we're bringing him up now, and we will get to the public after.
Sure, so on the new plans, I think, you know, the plaques are a great idea, the horse trough is a great idea, wherever it ends up being on site. The bus shelter using the salvage columns, very good. I think that's been detailed very well. The Grove Street stair, the rebuilding of that, that's an important integral part of the site, so that's a good idea. Moving the supermarket facade out to be in line with the first line of columns where they actually are in place. It's also a good idea, access to the tunnel, we've talked about, it's a good idea. And even the residential development on the east parcel, I think we've gone over that previously, and I think the architecture is in good shape for that. The stamped asphalt pavement, I actually agree with Mr. Webb that it's a little bit confusing with the colors. It might actually be better to have, you have the two tracks and maybe it could just be a strip of metal or concrete to delineate the two tracks next to each other. It will give you kind of the linear feel of the site where the tracks were. However, it would be so confusing for parking spaces and obviously the handicap parking spaces with their blue coloring.
Or brick. That's what I was thinking.
Correct. The lights on the columns, I don't really find them historically appropriate. I mean, that can be explored further, but I really think maybe it'd be best to just have the column, columns be the columns and have actual, you know, historic or, you know, nicely designed light fixtures that meet code and are at their correct height, you know, kinda interspersed with the columns.
Is it, is, when you say historically correct, is it that the design of the fixture or is it that the fixture attached to the stanchions?
I think it's a little, it's a little strange, it's, you know, we're trying to combine two different things, lighting on a historic column that would have never had lighting. So we're introducing something to those, you know, to that material that remains that would have never actually been there before.
Mm-hmm.
I think that creates kind of a, it's a, you know, it's a little-
It degrades the historical, is that what you're saying?
I think aesthetically, it's kind of mixing two things. And, you know, as Mr. Webb said, we're not even sure if that even provides enough light for the parking, and I suspect it might actually not. So we'll have to see how that turns out. But, you know, they, they make beautiful light fixtures that could go, you know, in between the columns and throughout the parking lot. I think that would meet code and also be aesthetically pleasing and not, you know, try to mix something with the historic elements that are already on site. And then on the columns themselves, so I think we've made good-
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
What if the columns were lit? Does that, does that, the column, instead of a light fixture, if the columns themselves were lit somehow, either with a, with a spotlight, not uplighting or something like that, does that degrade the historical?
I think because you aren't introducing something that's aesthetically disparate or, you know, another element.
Another piece of hardware?
Correct, you know, maybe if it could be, you know, outlined, an LED light or something, that would be acceptable.
Mm-hmm.
Because you're still understanding what the historic structure looked like without, you know, the kind of interference with the light fixtures on it.
Mm-hmm, okay.
So I, yeah, I think we've made good progress with the fire department, that keeping the canopies in place might be an issue for fire trucks. Obviously, it's only 16 feet high, so a ladder truck would have difficulty trying to get around. I think it could be explored more, whether it's the entire site or there could be pieces broken up to allow truck access. That is a, a good consideration. And then on the columns themselves, so, you know, I think, I think, you know, just like my first memo back in December, I think it's important to start with keeping every single historic column or stanchion in place as we can. So I took it upon myself to try to do my own parking analysis and what I, I guess Mr. Webb alluded to, you know, it, it looks like, is it possible that we could do 60-degree parking, keep every column, have the drive aisles one way, each way? And then I, I understand your point about circulation could be difficult. So what I thought, as somebody who might visit the site, is that where you have the Grove Street access, that that-
Can you put this up on the screen?
No, I didn't introduce it.
Oh.
It's just a sketch I did on my own. Where the Grove Street access is, that you keep that a 24-foot aisle all the way across, so east to west across the site. And then basically keep your parking lot the way it's shown here in the south portion, but then north of Grove Street, you could switch to the 60-degree parking. And I came out to approximately, depending on drive aisles, you know, having the, the carousels for the, the carts and handicap, approximately 180 parking spaces doing it that way, which is what you were figuring. So is 180 parking spaces possible and is doing the 60-degree parking possible?
To answer the question about the 60-degree parking, I looked at different 60 degrees, even 75 degrees to try to maintain, you know, the appropriateness of the, essentially what I'll call a nominal 20-foot aisle that would be between the columns.
18-foot, nine.
Yeah, right. So it is physically possible, yes. Relative to the adequacy of 180, I'm gonna defer that to our parking expert who will be here at the next hearing.
Okay. Right now it's, and this is on the west parcel, right now you're currently showing 200 parking spaces?
Correct.
Okay, so hold on, just for clarity, both for the public and the board. Mr. Ross, you're saying that you've created a potential sketch using a modified parking arrangement from what they have now proposed? And that with that modified sketch, you have come up with 180 parking spots, which is similar to what they're proposing in this current plan? Is that what you're saying?
20 spaces less than-
20 spaces less, okay.
Correct. And Mr. Webb spoke to that earlier, that by keeping every single column, we're gonna lose some of those parking spaces. But it's, it's a possibility.
I'd say again, I, and I'm not trying to be evasive, but it is physically possible to do that. From my perspective, I don't think it's desirable to do that beyond the parking count issue from a, just a circulation standpoint, but physically possible, the answer is yes.
What is this, what is the circulation problem that you believe is caused not having dual circulation? What is the detriment there?
Well, you're forcing people, I mean, we have already what is a dense parking area.
Let me take a razor just right-
No, I will. But then to, you're gonna force certain movements. I think one of the things about this parking lot, particularly in its nature as a supermarket, you're gonna have obviously a lot of repeat customers. You're gonna have people who come here and they're gonna figure out their own way, how close to the front door do they wanna park? How far are they willing to walk? You know, that's just human nature, everyone's gonna have their own, own thing. They're all gonna sort of compete with spaces and, force spaces in a different way. If we were to go to one-way circulation, let's just pretend all of these were the appropriate width to make sure all the columns were, were there. So you'd have inbound movements off of Grove Street. I presume this first aisle would likely be going toward the store. And then you'd have an exit row or a potential exit row. And to your point, pardon, I agree with you, we'd have to extend this aisle, which causes a reduction in parking spaces for this, so that you have, you could theoretically bypass this first aisle, you can't go down and get near the store with the second aisle, and then this will also be a northern, northern movement toward the store again. So you'd have essentially two separate circulation patterns, all with the ability to exit for multiple routes ultimately with this extended drive aisle. Inherently, we're taking and forcing people to go places, we're creating decision point early on here and forcing people to go, maybe not find any spaces here to circulate in front of the store where there's more pedestrian movements and then have to choose, are they gonna circulate back through here? Are they gonna circulate through here? It just, again, it forces certain decision points and certain activity and concentrates certain activity in certain parts of the lot that is not necessarily efficient.
So what's the detriment to that? People are uncomfortable coming to the lot, they don't wanna come park there? What, what's the downside?
Well, I think-
Yeah, yeah, I know, less people coming, they're not, they're not gonna come?
No, I think it's an issue of congestion, concentration of park, traffic versus pedestrians. It's really, in my view, somewhat outdated, you know, way to do a parking lot. I think we would evaluate that you have more flexibility to have perpendicular parking with 24-foot aisles and that affords people a common experience in a parking lot. This is-
Then people don't have to, people don't have to make decisions. Do I turn down this aisle, do I turn down that?
Yeah, what I'm, what I'm trying to get to is what the benefit-loss here of losing the historic elements versus the benefits for parking so that we clearly- the historic elements versus the benefits for parking, so that we clearly know what our decision is. That's what I'm trying to get to.
Yeah.
I'm trying to understand what the parameters are. Okay?
No, no problem.
Yeah, my last point, I think at Whole Foods in West Orange, the traffic does, they have areas, and the traffic does go up and down. So, you know, and people, you know, kind of just cut across the parking, especially when it's not full, to find their own appropriate parking spot. So I just wanted to bring up that I think it's possible, that's all. Thank you.
Well, I have, I have a question for you, Mr. Ross. So it's interesting when you look at the renderings and you see these, the lines that mimic the railroad line. But then when you think about, and you see the site plan as well, when you see the, when you think about actually navigating that space, you think about cars coming and going, cars parked, you hardly, in my opinion, you'll hardly even see those lines. So what is your opinion? Do you really think that that's adding something if we, you know, you really can't even see them? What's the point?
I think if all, that's possible. I think if all the columns were still there, though, you'd get that linear feel, and then if the, you know, you just had the two tracks delineated, you'd get that linear feel. I think this, where we only keep one of every three columns currently is what is proposed, I think we're losing some of that. And yes, it is proposed to be stamped on the asphalt, but I'll be honest, that doesn't really, you know, look like historic railroad tracks to me. And so, and I think if there was a trade-off where we could keep more columns and lose that, especially if there's going to end up being a conflict, you know, with how the parking lot's laid out, you know, I'd rather see the columns kept. But you're right, I think as a last resort, you know, that would work as well, at least to give you that linear feel, because I think, you know, when I just look at the columns, one every three, I don't, I don't get that feeling of how the train sheds. You know, these were long linear structures.
And just so I understand, with this parking configuration, would you be able to turn left when you come into the parking lot as well? Or just straight down row one and then, or right down row three?
That was my idea, that you wouldn't feel so claustrophobic with the one-way. So you could come in, you know, where Grove Street entry is, that basically south of that, they could keep the configuration the way they have it. And then if people are going up and down the aisles, there'd be a 24-foot swath there, you know, in the middle of the site, to be able to turn and go wherever you want to go. I think, I think you're right. The way it is now, if you had to go all the way down to next to Bloomfield and go all the way back up, it might be a little disorienting.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
So you're saying halfway down the road?
Yeah. One-way on one side?
Yep.
Yeah. Are there any questions of, excuse me, of the applicant's engineer concerning his testimony this evening from the public?
Kathleen Bennett, Teng Glenn Wood Road. I have a question. Mr. Steves was asked about the three islands that are closest to, the new islands that are there now. And he suggested that you were going to explain what they were, unless I missed that.
I'm sorry, I don't, what, what question?
What purpose do those three islands serve that are closest to the store?
Separation from the drive aisle that's in front of the store and the parking spaces that are there. I mean, it's traditional, just as we do on the south side towards Bloomfield, is at the end of a parking row, we want to have an aisle that introduces, one, it's an opportunity to place a light, it's an opportunity to add some green space in certain instances, and two, it provides at least a temporary pedestrian haven in the case of crossing traffic. So it really just separates the last car space with the adjacent drive aisle.
Oh, I see. So is there any, you've mentioned that it might be green space?
Well, it is proposed as green space now.
Because it, it wasn't on the, on the plan. It just looked like an island.
Well, because it's in an allocation, it hasn't been fully designed and integrated with the landscape plan yet. But in, if, you know, the landscaping that was proposed in those same islands in their previously proposed location would be adjusted to be here as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions?
Carrie Heller, One Greenwood, is referenced as the neighbor next door. I don't think I've missed a meeting since we brought up the concept of perhaps the first loading design not working. I've patiently come to each meeting, I've listened to your traffic expert ask questions tonight, and I'm still waiting to see the articulation drawings for the truck loading.
And-
That has yet to be offered, for this new, because this is a new redesign now.
I didn't hear any reference as to when that would be presented. I heard about traffic and when might we see-
So I think that, I think that's the question. When will, when will we see, when will we see that?
Well, what it also includes, it's back in history to the question.
Well, I think we know, we know why you're, why, why you're interested. I mean, you're the adjacent property owner.
But the larger-
And, and what they're proposing-
From the sidewalk, it's the snow removal, it's other trucks other than the large trailers, it's when one truck is leaving and another is coming in and it's at the bay. These are significant drawings. I happened to come out of the trucking business family many, many years ago. Unfortunately, I know too much about trucking. I don't know anything about supermarkets.
Well, we, you were going to present this along with your traffic testimony, is that, counselor, is that?
We'll certainly describe the movements in further detail, whether or not at that time, I guess we wouldn't even know when that date's going to happen yet, we'll have supplied to the board the full articulation drawings as requested.
Right, but there needs to be some testimony about it, too. So you're going to come back and testify about it?
If, I, well-
You just can't, you just can't drop a set of drawings on us and not afford us the opportunity to ask you questions about it.
Our experts have asked for it. We've all asked for it.
We've agreed that we're going to provide it.
So it'll be provided, and if we have a next, another meeting a month from now-
You've got to come back and tell us about it.
We'll have it before then, I would assume.
Understood.
Right?
So that's-
Yes. We have also asked, and I know the answer back is, I missed the question, the frequency and the number of trucks, and what hours of the day, and whether it's going to be at night, or whether it perhaps doesn't have to be during the day. The answer back is, we don't know our tenant. And again, I'm in this business, I'm not in the supermarket business, and I understand that, but we seem to be down to one supermarket. So if there is an answer as to frequency, amount, number of trucks, and even larger than that, the business has changed tremendously, beer specialty trucks, bakery specialty trucks. It used to be Wonder Bread, Pex, and Coca-Cola.
Well, I assume that since they've been working with the vendor and drawing up these plans, excuse me, I have a cold, and my medication is wearing off, that since you've been working with, with the operator and drawing up the plan, that part of that is, he's been telling you what kind of trucks are coming in and out of there. So, you know, may, you know, obviously not at this meeting, you may not be prepared, but we need some further testimony as to what the expectation is, you know, since it has come up.
Understood, Mr. Chairman, and we'll provide that.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
John Reimnitz. Give my address?
Yes.
Yes. 189 Highland Avenue, Montclair. I also just had a question about the trucks and if it was a 24-hour period that delivery is coming and going, or does it happen just in the morning, just in the evening? Any idea about that at the moment?
We really don't know that. I mean, that is end-user dependent, and to the extent that we've been talking about and make reference to, there's sort of one there. Obviously, that one still is unofficial, they haven't signed on, and then that's part of a more detailed discussion and probably a related discussion to what we just said we would offer.
Although, but yeah, we're going to go back and obviously try and see if we can get better than we've done on that and give some detail on the-
Give us an idea.
Yeah, yeah.
I do not expect it to be a 24-hour operation.
Do you know the distance from Grove Street to the front of the store at this point in time? How much parking? What is the parking area? What was the distance in the parking?
From Grove-
From Grove Street to the front of the store?
Grove Street runs, runs perpendicular.
I'm sorry, I'm Bloomfield to the store.
I think at its closest points, and it's in the neighborhood of about 300 feet, and it's at the farther corner, closer to the Bloomfield Grove corner, it's probably only order 350 feet.
Okay, so, since it's football season, that's like me starting at the zero yard line and trying to get to the whole other side of the stadium, right? That's 100 yards. Are, can, do you know of other examples in a downtown area where there's this kind of size parking? We're in downtown Montclair, and you're proposing a 100-yard football field in, on the main street to the store. You have other examples where that exists?
Across the street, not to be, you know, facetious about it, but obviously the East Parcel is one large, you know, parking lot today, that certainly has movements that are in excess of that 300 feet, you know, to get to even the rotunda.
I'm sorry, I don't understand that.
The existing eastern parcel is one large parking lot today.
Right.
That's larger, I would even, you know, it's, it's larger than even what we're proposing today on the West Parcel.
Is there anything that, you know, this is a whole different way of looking at the project, and I don't know if we're too far down the line to make other suggestions, but is there anything that keeps the store from being more centered on the site and splitting up some of the parking on one side and parking on the other, just to break it up, to open up to the neighborhood, to the south?
I think we actually had Mr. Volson testify to that previously. I mean, Mr. Webb can attempt to answer, but that's, I think that might be really Mr. Volson's sort of testimony as opposed to Mr. Webb's testimony in terms of supermarket layout.
And, and also, you asked if we're too far down the road. I mean, we've gone through this in previous meetings. Basically, what you're proposing is demolition of the existing structure and rebuilding it. And the, the current developer's plan is offering to reuse the existing footprint of the existing store as it's existed, you know, since the 80s. And I guess the thought was that, well, everybody liked it when it was Pathmark or dealt with it when it was Pathmark, even if they didn't like it, so it's certainly no worse than it would be when it was Pathmark. This, that goes for the distance from Bloomfield Avenue, you know, the parking, you know, and the whole shebang. So, I mean, yeah, there's nothing that stops a developer from knocking this down and building a new building, but, you know, things like cost and, and that's not what they're offering. They're asking us to consider this plan. And so that's what we're trying to do, consider this plan and what's the best way that this plan might be able to work. You know, because they haven't, although it's been, although all these alternatives have been discussed, they really haven't just expressed an interest in pursuing those. We can't force them to pursue that. I mean, the only thing that we can do is we can look at this plan and we can approve it or not approve it.
But John, in, you know, in line with what Mr. Reimnitz is saying, we have an area here that's going to be developed with, you know, there's an apartment going on in Glen Ridge, there's Seymour Street, there's this own building right here. We have a grievous lack of parking, if we're short 300 and whatever parking spots according to this current plan. There's no encouragement for people to walk here, which I believe if you activate that Glen Ridge Avenue area, you would encourage people to walk, and you wouldn't maybe need the parking spots.
People were walking to Pathmark. And really, to me, the access is very little different than it was when, when Pathmark was on.
But we have much more development going on. We have more people who we think are not going to want cars. Why don't we try to insist that they have some encouragement to walk around the area?
Well, this is-
A half of it is not accessible to pedestrians.
And the tunnel really was a key here.
Tunnel was key as well for bringing people in from that side of the north side. So I believe we keep crossing over that. We have, we're talking about parking endlessly. Why aren't we encouraging this developer to do something that will encourage pedestrian traffic?
Well, it's, it's not as if you've been silent on that issue. I mean-
I feel like I've been the only one who's saying this, and I'm not sure that I have the support of-
Well, I don't know. I, and again, this, this goes to, I want to hear the testimony about traffic and circulation. I'm looking at it from the standpoint, as I've just said, that this is not an exacerbation of an existing condition. This is the existing condition. And if somebody were to go in and take over the Pathmark and just open it up, you know, like it was originally intended, then we wouldn't, we wouldn't be having this kind of discussion. But we are, because we have somebody who's building something now. But they are, really, this plan is not so much building on this site. It's taking, it's taking stores away from this site. It's tearing down, because they're replacing commercial locations on this site with parking. You know, the Pathmarks, the size, the Pathmark size and location of the store is pretty much staying the same. The Pig and Prince is staying the same, the train station, the waiting room itself is staying the same. The really major difference between the site today and what's being offered up here is the parking lot and how, how they're treating the parking lot. So from a pedestrian access point, and this isn't, I'm not saying this to debate it or anything, so don't raise your hand, you know, this is my opinion, and this is how, you know, what I'm seeing, you know, that from, from a pedestrian access point, really the only situation that is different so far as the former Pathmark and the current proposal is that people can't walk through the underpass. What they have, what they have to do is instead of cutting down and over, they have to go over and down to the stairway. And the stairway is not, is not handicap accessible. And yeah, there are going to be some situations where it is a little bit less convenient for people coming in from Glen Ridge Avenue, but it's not as, for the bulk of the people, I don't think it's going to be that much, that much of a difference, because again, basically they're going to be, they're going to be accessing the Pathmark with kind of the same amount of steps, but like I said, instead of going down and under, they're going to go over and then down the side of the store, instead of walking through the, instead of walking through the parking lot and then walking under the street to get in, they're going to have to cross the street on the surface and then walk down the side and go down the steps. So it may be a few more steps, but we're not talking like a football field.
I disagree.
And it's already a football field from the entrance to the Pathmark store to the Bloomfield Avenue. That's the way it's been since the 80s. And from-
No.
Yes, it is, because you had to go in-
No, you had to go inside the mall. You had to go inside-
We have a new, we have a new entry. Are you totally discounting the fact that there is an enormous building going up on the East Parcel that had never existed here before?
Because most people-
With hundreds of residents and-
Because most people wanted to park-
Cars.
Wanted to park in front, park in the small parking lot. That's the one that was always full. The one on the other side of the street was pretty much, most of the time, most of the time empty. Most people wanted to park on that side. That parking lot was always full. That was the one where you rode around looking for a parking space. So yeah, for some people, again, for some people, yeah, maybe it might be a little bit more of a walk, but even if you were parked, even if you were parked on the other side of the street, you had to, it was a long island, the closest that you could park is if you could get to one of the spaces that was maybe on the side of the, on the other side of the handicap spaces. You'd walk down to the rotunda, you'd walk under, and it wasn't a short walk from the rotunda up to the front of the store, because you had to walk all the way over to the other side of the store to get into it, because the entrance was at the, was at the west side of the store. So again, it's not like it was a short walk, you know, and we're, and now all of a sudden we've got all these long walks that we're creating. It's kind of the same, it's kind of the existing situation. And I'm not saying that, I'm not saying that that is something that maybe we want, but I'm listening to the application as it's being presented, and I'm kind of, I'm evaluating that, and that's one of the things that I'm, I'm seeing.
Do you allow the public to ask questions? Maybe we can verify.
Publicly ask questions when we are going to witnesses' testimony. You don't get to ask questions of the board.
I'm, I'm about to.
Well, you're not supposed to be, you're not up here, and let me address this, sir. If you're going to come up and ask questions of the board, this is not the time that you do that. This is, I've called up, I've called up people to ask witnesses, to ask questions of this particular witness, okay? Board is not a witness.
I have one last question. Is there anything other than the in-tenant wanting this particular arrangement that would keep you- keep you, keep one from splitting up the parking on Bloomfield Avenue and Glen Ridge?
Again, I'm going to give the same answer. Mr. Volson testified about the requirements of grocery store design. It was not specific to any tenant.
James Cotter, 21 Cloverhill Place. Mr. Webb, the east parcel, is that building currently on the east parcel?
It is not.
So, there's a new dynamic, new residents, new parking patterns, new traffic, a totally new dynamic on the east parcel, correct?
Yes.
Is there a new point of egress into the site on the west parcel from Grove Street?
Yes.
Have you contacted the county about that point of egress?
We did have a meeting with the county, yes.
Who did you speak to with the county?
We spoke with the county planner and the county engineer, represented from the county engineer's office, I don't remember.
And have they approved that point of egress?
They have not. There's a pending application.
Do you know if the township council supports that point of egress?
It hasn't changed from our plan. My understanding through other discussion was that in general, the council seems to support the application, at least that as it was in May. So, it hasn't changed since that time.
Have you done any study about how pedestrians might be impacted by that point of egress?
We have not.
Do you know how many pedestrians walk on Grove Street either from the south side of Bloomfield Avenue in order to access the site or from Glen Ridge Avenue South in order to access the site on Grove Street?
No.
Can we get that information from your parking experts, your traffic experts?
Well, in as much as the site is virtually not in operation, I mean, there, I guess there's a pizza place and a Popeye's, so somebody could see how many pedestrians are going to those two stores, but I, I don't know that that's going to, going to get where you're, what you're looking for.
Do you know that there was a supermarket here previously?
Yes.
Do you know how many people walked to the site previously?
No.
You have no information about pedestrian movement towards this site in the previous iteration?
That's a different question. If, I mean, I don't know how many, no. I know, I can guess of pedestrian paths that they would have used to access this store previously, yes.
Have you done any research or had any discussions with fourth ward residents about how they might access this site from a pedestrian standpoint?
No.
The stairs that you're presupposing, or you're going to reconfigure on Grove Street, will they be ADA compliant?
No.
Have you asked whether they must be ADA compliant?
Well, stairs in general cannot be ADA compliant.
Thus, would you have to have some sort of ramp or elevator if you're going to have that access point?
Not for that access point, but if we were to devise in that location with that elevation difference between Grove Street and our parking lot, it would have to be some alternative to stairs to be ADA compliant.
Council, you said that you found that the previous owners of the property, our properties, had some sort of agreement with the county about a point of egress underneath Grove Street.
There's a filed map that indicates the, an easement granted in favor of the predecessor title.
And have you presented that to the planning board?
Well, let's clarify, okay? Because I looked closely at this issue.
Right here.
And there is no easement. There's no recorded easement. What happened is in the nineteen, when it was created in 1980s, this connection was created at that time. There seems to be, it's shown on the site plan, but I have not seen any easement for this.
Okay, so months ago.
And I believe it was created at that moment in time when they, when they took the train tracks out and put the parking lot in.
So, it, we're saying, I think we're saying the same thing, but there's a, there's a filed map and it references an easement, but correct, and we haven't found a written.
But it's not a dedicated word easement. When I first heard all this, I was thinking, oh, was there an easement from like 1910 and, you know, so there's no, there's no public right of way there, there's.
That's correct.
Well, you got, well, there, you're crossing, the only thing that I question is you're crossing municipal property underneath the ground.
Oh, or county, county property.
County ground.
Right.
So, the question that I posed, the question that I posed months ago was, who owns the property under Grove Street?
I think technically the county owns it, but.
If the county owns that property under Grove Street, then the public should have egress.
Excuse me, just to the point of clarification, it could be that there's a point of egress up to the start of the private property building. I'm not saying that's the case, but is that a point of clarification here in that even if you could get access?
You'd have to go against, you'd have to go over private property in order to get to the.
Lot, anyway.
Easement that you're talking about. And it wouldn't make sense to do that when you could walk on the surface and stay on public property and not have to trespass on private property in order to gain access, the kind of access that you're looking for.
Only if you could access safely. Only if you could access safely. Currently, the testimony that's been given here is that the Grove Street stairs are somehow going to replace that access point underground, and it's my contention and my Neighborhood's Association's contention that that is not a replacement. It's simply a feature. You know, there's no, there's no way to get down those stairs with a grocery cart. There's no way to get up those stairs with a grocery cart. There's no way to get around this new entranceway into the site without putting your life on the line.
If you're walking, you're going to take grocery.
I think we need to have clarification, one way or another, about who has access to that tunnel.
Well, again, the, the references, the easement is granted in favor, the grantee is Montclair Center Associates, which is our predecessor title.
I don't think there's an issue, I don't think there's an issue with who has access to the tunnel so much as what is the best way to provide pedestrian access to the property from the, what is that? I guess that's the, the, the south, north and south of the, to the, no, that's, that's northeast, northeast of the site from that area where Grove Street and Cloverhill and going down, going down Glen Ridge Avenue towards the train station.
The muse.
From that area.
The McCarter housing.
Because people coming up who live in the muse, who can get out to Bloomfield Avenue, of course, can come up Bloomfield Avenue. People who are, any of the new developments which are west of the building will come down Bloomfield Avenue and they can, but it's the people who are coming from, and people who are coming from Willow Street and Glenwood and those areas can come along, like Oona Plaza and walk and cut through. So, it's the, it's the area that is to the, to the northeast of it that will have the longest walk. So, what is the, what is the best way to provide them access to the site that doesn't cause them to walk halfway around the world in order to get there?
And I think to that point, and to Mr. Gilmer's request earlier, which we've agreed to look at, we're going to look at potential sidewalk access.
What has to be done, engineer.
Yeah, what can be done, yeah.
Just one more question about the easement, since you're talking about it.
And also, you know, ignoring Carmel's request that you explore putting a back door.
Yeah. Also, you're saying, you're looking at a map that said there's an easement. Does it describe what kind of easement? There's a gross easement, that's an pertinent easement, a pertinent follows the property, a gross might just say follows the owner, and when you, that person no longer owns it, the easement is gone. So, we need to know more about that.
Yes, I mean, we can provide the problem map. It describes it as a pedestrian easement, so unfortunately, that's, that's it.
And I think we also need to know more information about what the county thinks about an entrance from Grove Street, and for you to connect with our fourth ward counselor, Dr. Baskerville, about what the township council might potentially say about that, about that access point.
I would argue that it's the county's right of way to approve or deny it. Honestly, I'm not sure the township has much of a say, unless it's through influence with, with the county, through that, their own review.
Just one more point. Are there fire exit doors on Grove Street in the plans? I mean, that, there are, there may, there should be doors right there. No? You don't know? I mean, it seems to me that if there's a door that's a fire exit, that could be an entrance.
Again, I'm not the architect, so I'm, I'm not sure where the emergency egress locations are.
Thank you.
While we're, before you get started, and while we're talking about that wall, I don't know that we've seen, and maybe it's because it was so many months ago that we started this that I don't remember, but the treatment of that wall, again, with, based on the new plan, I think we need to go back and look at that. Of course, it's a, it's a long facade, it's a long, solid facade, and I vaguely recall, and I don't know how many of you guys recall, what it looks like along Grove Street on that side of the building now, but we need to take another look at that.
Up to and including the corner at Glen Ridge, right?
Yes.
That could be.
Let me just be clear. First of all, my name is David Greenbaum, 91 Lloyd Road, Montclair, New Jersey, member of the Historic Preservation Commission. Just to confirm, so I understand correctly, my only questions are to address specifically to the traffic expert?
Correct.
No, he's a civil.
He's a site engineer.
Site engineer.
And the testimony he gave tonight. And the testimony he gave tonight.
Okay. So, I'm going to make a, a little bit of an introductory statement as leading up to my question.
No, no, no.
Can we, can we cut right to your question? We're asking about what he testified.
This is the problem I'm having, is we're focusing on the trees and we're missing the forest. So, the questions I'll ask relate to the trees, but I want to make it clear that it, it's opening up the opportunity to explore this a little bit further back in perspective. We already have more than a hundred yards. We actually have a football field plus another 50 feet to add to my colleague's suggestion, Mr. Reimitz. And this parking configuration, somebody raised the question earlier, is this suitable for an urban environment? Are there any precedents for this kind of parking depth away from the main thoroughfare in this type of environment? No one seems to have shown us an example. I believe you were asked if you can provide an example of an existing site plan.
Did you give us Whole Foods in West Orange?
I didn't provide that. I think Mr. Rust did.
Well, I think they're an entirely different type of urban plan, a whole different, so if you want to make that, if that's the argument, I would argue that that is a unsatisfactory comparison because it's entirely contextually different. The question I have, and this is kind of aggregating many people's thoughts and comments, is why haven't we considered the prospect of having entrances on the north and south side? And I refuse to use the word rear door and front door, I say both front doors. Why can't we have circulation coming from both north and south to enter the property?
This question was asked, I believe, three meetings ago, but go ahead.
It was asked, but in a different context.
But he can't answer it because he hasn't been directed to put that door on that side.
Well, the only thing that you can say really is that you haven't been asked, you haven't been asked to consider that. You're the architect.
What do you consider?
And furthermore, he's the site engineer. The architect is the person who decides about the doors on the building, so the question is late to the wrong witness.
Well, I don't think, you know, unfortunately.
It's to the, it's to the wrong witness.
Okay.
That's about the building. And maybe you had some confusion like I did about whether the wall is the building or not, but in any case, we really haven't talked about this evening about why there aren't doors in other places. At previous meetings, and I'm, you know, going to just summarize, basically, at previous meetings, there was testimony about how the supermarket operators want the front of the store along one, and they want all the registers along the front of the store, and they don't want people coming into the back of the store because the back of the store operations, because it creates a security issue for them, and that they don't want to have to monitor people going in and out of, they want everybody to go through the same set of doors because it's easier for them because shrink or loss from theft is the major loss that a supermarket operator incurs, so they have to keep control over the flow of people in and out of the store.
I hear you.
Like multiple entrances.
I hear you.
The store is oriented towards that parking lot and is not oriented towards.
But that's the problem. Why can't it be oriented towards Grove Street? Then you'd have an entrance on the north and on the south.
And you'd be coming into the store, though, the front windows of the store would be on the side of the store because the store is below grade on Grove Street. And you'd have to have stairs coming down from Grove Street in order to get in. You could do it from Glen Ridge because Glen Ridge would be ground level, but then you, then where would you put the loading dock?
You can do it.
No, you, yes, you can do it, but.
We can show you.
It's, it's not, it's not impossible. We could do anything. The question is, though, from a business standpoint.
Yes.
In any supermarket operator who you have going into a site like this, they want the registers along the front of the store. You've never gone into a supermarket, or rather, you've only, maybe only gone into one or two in your lifetime that did not have the registers in the front.
Okay.
And at most, at most, where you have multiple entrances into a supermarket, it's at one, it's at either side of where the registers are.
Exactly.
And then that causes a problem because if you come in on the wrong side, you've got to walk all the way over to where you can get through because they don't want you walking through the register.
Well, that's not necessarily true. The, hold on, hold on.
It might be, no, there are exceptions, there are exceptions to that rule, but, but 99% of the supermarkets that are out there, they have one set of entrances and all the registers are across the front. That is the standard.
I agree with that. You made a, you made an assertion, the ShopRite in Bloomfield has.
Is the worst store to park and to go in and out of.
Has, has a.
Don't use that as an example.
I'm not, I'm, I'm just using it as a.
And that's an exception.
Can I speak?
That's an exception.
Can I speak?
That's just an exception.
The, I'm not, I'm not.
So, take our time and tell me that you're right. Yes, you're right, but it's an exception.
Hold on, let him speak. I'm not advocating. I am pointing out that the fast food area of that ShopRite has an access entrance and egress, bringing you into the salad area, the.
That's the worst of the.
Wait, wait, not the one in Bloomfield, that, by the florist.
In Clinton, in Clinton.
The one in West Orange does.
My Brookdale.
The, the ShopRite in West Orange has two entrances that are catty-cornered, but one is a, just like you explained, a whole line of checkout counters, and the other one is just the fast food.
That's what I'm saying.
It's in West Orange. I go there, I work right there.
But it's the same thing in, it's the same thing in the Brookdale one, that the fast food area has its own access, and I'm not saying that's.
No, it doesn't. It's by the florist.
By the florist, yes.
The floral area.
That's what I mean. That's what I mean, but, well, okay, not fast food. It brings you into the quick, it's a quick food area. There's, there's a hot food counter, there's a salad.
There are exceptions to the rule.
It's of course the way.
There are exceptions to the rule.
But they're very close. But they're catty-cornered.
Guys, I'm not advocating for this. I'm only pointing out that here is a model where they are bringing you into a particular area designated for a particular type of selling of food in, in that supermarket. It seems to be in two stores. That may be a model, and so the assertion that it is the, that only the registers in front, which is, as you say, 99%, you find, may not be operative, and it may be possible to have an alternative secondary entrance and, and egress into a particularly designated area that might accommodate some of this, some of Carmel's issues and others with, with different.
It's possible, but it's not desirable. It's not, and there's a reason why, there are, there are security reasons and operational reasons why it's not desirable.
Absolutely, I understand that. It just think our whole focus has been on parking, and I'll say it again, why aren't we more focused on pedestrian activity when we are trying, we're in the middle of an urban center, we're building this big building right there, there's other buildings going on. We want people to walk, and we have a 300-whatever deficit of parking spaces here. I can't, I don't understand. We're talking about stanchions and historic elements where a basic thing is, how are people going to get there and get in?
I think part of the problem, and part of the problem here is that we have, this site that we're talking about is not a clean slate. We have an office building, we have a train station, that waiting room that we don't want to touch, we have certain historic elements that we don't want to touch, we have differences in grade that go only along one side of the store, we have, we have an existing parking lot and we have an existing situation and an existing building that, that the developer wants to reuse that's already situated in a certain fashion. So, yeah, if. already situated in a certain fashion. So, yeah, if, if we are going to go back, all the way back to the drawing board and say, hey, this is a bad configuration, we need to tear this down and not go for this, then, you know, but we've come all this way-
No.
You know, talking about this, and it-
I just can't imagine. There's not a solution.
And to keep, and to keep bringing it up.
The reason we're not making progress, if I may say so, is I believe that the landlord is framing everything in such a way that it doesn't give you any wiggle room, and we're being pushed into a corner. And I'm suggesting we got to step back and we have to look at this correctly. There's other options that are not being considered. And I guarantee every gentleman sitting right here who is capable of coming up with a better option-
There are always other options for every site that we don't consider, and there are reasons why we don't consider it. This has been discussed. And because we have come down the road this far, it's because, I think, that we've decided that we weren't going to consider those, that we were going to try and consider this.
I-
That's why we're, that's why we're here. Otherwise, we wouldn't be here tonight talking about this plan. We would have told them to go by, by.
No, because the last time they were here, if I'm not mistaken, if I may say so, they weren't, it wasn't fully-
The store has always been in that configuration, it's always been in that location. The store, the supermarket, has always been there.
John, may I say something? Has anyone here in this room ever shopped at King's in Upper Montclair? Raise your hand. Okay. Anyone here shop at King's? Okay. How many doors are there entering King's?
There's two.
There's two. And how can one access-
They're on the same side of the building. They have entrance and an exit.
They're equal.
So there's an entrance and an exit.
You're assuming that the registers are all here, logically. You are, you are, you know how we think about-
That's where the windows are in the store. Of course, the registers are in front of the window.
Not necessarily. What if the registers went this way perpendicular, and now-
The store, supermarket operators don't put the registers not facing windows. They just don't do that.
I-
No, so-
There are exceptions. Yes, there are exceptions, but the vast majority of-
The front of that King's still faces the street, though. And in this case, it's not economically feasible to have the registers running north to south on the east side of this building. That's what, that's what the chair is establishing here.
Why is that not feasible? Now you have circulation.
Mr. Chairman?
Hey, guys.
Well, this is, I know, I've been, I have, I have indulged this debate. Yeah, we're way beyond question.
No, no, I think-
I've indulged this debate.
I think there's no consideration for the larger urban plan for our community. And I think there's no consideration for the larger urban-
Really, the time for you to express that opinion-
We have it.
Is not now. It's not now.
When do we have this opportunity?
Could be a few meetings from now, until they finish their case.
But you see, I think they're building their case. The last time they were here, they weren't prepared.
But again, we are here to hear their presentation, not your opinion.
That's fine.
So what I'm going to ask you to do is I'm going to ask you to turn over the mic to Mr. Rabacki so that he can ask his questions.
Okay.
And when you are given the opportunity to make your presentation as, as an opposition witness, then you can raise your point and then we can discuss it at that time.
I will step down, but I will say that I believe that we are being forced into a corner. We're not thinking, we're thinking within a box that we're being placed in. And I think it is incumbent upon everybody here and the community to do the right thing for the long-term success of our town. And we need to look at this from the point of view of urban planning, historic preservation, and what we already have and how we utilize it in the most effective way. And what is being proposed is completely dismissing each and every one of those things only on the premise that this is what the tenant wants. So I think that there are other options, and I think people can present them to you.
And there are always other options, and according to you-
He's capable of providing it.
Other options can be done irregardless of what other considerations there might be. Let's discuss this when it's your time, okay?
Fair enough.
Mr. Rabacki.
I'm sticking to questions, although. My question is, one of the questions for whomever.
No, 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 no. Questions cannot be for whomever. They have to be of this witness at this point.
Okay.
At this point.
So the testimony, yes, okay, I'm on board, I'm on board. I'm on, I'm on board.
Exhausted.
I'm on board. I'm going to ask some questions about the easement.
We need to know.
You talked about the easement.
I did.
We'll skip the easement. We'll skip the easement then.
Long time ago. What about that bathroom break?
Structurally, or site-wise?
I was hoping to, you know.
Is there any downside to not providing access through this tunnel to the residence? Site point, prioritizing circulation issue? Are there alternatives?
It's a security issue.
No, no access.
Yes, it's a security issue, well, to provide, no, there's no-
I'm saying if there was not an easement.
Okay.
This doesn't exist because you guys can't figure out what it is. My first associate is-
They have the right to convey.
What it would have to be, would have to be a-
So what is the question?
This doesn't exist.
It's a relationship.
It's a resident.
But supermarkets lose most of their money to it. So that's why they want to control entrances.
I don't believe so.
Because margins are very small.
But we don't need, we don't need the town.
Generally speaking, they think this is-
Thank you. Can you explain, you, you, help me out here. You had said that-
They want everybody to come in one way. That's the duty they keep an eye on. That's where the security officers-
Correct.
And is there any way to push this back?
And they're not going to change their business unless they've got some extraordinary reason to do that.
No.
So this space is really up to the operators that have to do it.
Correct.
Let's talk about the bank, one of my favorite subjects. Site plan originally submitted had it as 3669 square feet. One of the experts submitted documents that it's 4591. Can you clarify what the actual square foot of the bank is?
Yeah.
The reason I say that is because the parking expert is saying it's 4591.
Yeah, I, I have to review the documents. I don't recall what the, what the number is.
If it is 4591, would that, it seems that would require a variance, a parking variance, or is that not included? This may be a question for the lawyer. If it is 4591 and it required to provide 19 spaces as a drive-through bank, would that get locked, would that get included in the variance request, or is that property in some special status?
If, if I may recall, it said, I wasn't familiar with the numbers you're proposing. I, I do recall, I think one of the board members had identified that disparity early on, when I first testified about which number was right. We had one number in the parking table that was actually incorrect versus what was on the site plan, and we clarified that as a later submission that coordinated the two. Thirty-six sixty-nine, my belief, is, is the accurate number.
Okay, so the parking, okay.
We had reflected as part of the original submission, an inaccurate number. I don't remember if that was on the parking table or the plan, but there was an inconsistency there.
Okay. And then let's talk about, not from a traffic circulation, from a site design point of view. We have all these separate lots, and they all seem to have two entrances. What I don't understand is, we're adding an entrance, a one-way entrance to the bank site, which only has 17 parking spaces, to make two entrances. What, is there a site reason to have two entrances?
They actually have an existing entrance off of Grove Street today. It's essentially almost like a slip ramp that comes off of Grove Street. We're really replacing that.
That's your property.
But it's, they have an easement. It's for their benefit.
So they have an existing easement that you have to respect.
Correct.
Okay, that's what I want to get. From a, are there any other easements or agreements with the lot 4.02? I assume they can use 4.01 to exit. They have an access agreement on the other side?
Honestly, off the top of my head, I don't recall all of their rights. I know, again, that that, that the one entrance off of Grove Street specifically-
So are you know that one entrance does have an easement?
Correct. And whether or not, I believe they have rights, I mean, if, if I remember correctly, the property line actually splits the drive aisle. They don't have rights to the parking spaces, but they have rights to, to share the drive aisle off of Bloomfield Avenue.
It doesn't, but that's okay. The, as far as the access in the back on the, where the trucks deliver, is that 24365 access easement? That's in the back there?
Our easement on the adjacent property?
That's 365 days a year.
Yeah, I don't, I don't believe there's any limitation on that.
Okay, so that's always in effect. And then you had mentioned, there are two reasons, there were two reasons why the design of the stanchions, keeping more stanchions was problematic. And one of them was that it created a circulation issue, and another one was that it lost 10 to 20 spaces. You're speaking about losing 10 to 20 spaces on the west lot, not in the parking plan itself.
It's both.
Well, I guess my, my point is, it's the type of spaces. If, for instance, you, you, your attorney indicated that the retail in the office building, 6500 or 6300, that I talked about earlier, is a placeholder for either general office or some kind of office type of use, or possibly retail? It's not decided?
Well, it's, it's indicated, it's, the permitted use is retail. So it's not decided what it would be, but-
So, so my point is, if that ends up being office because you're covering the walls and it's got trash and you've got all kinds of issues going on there, it changes the, not the parking spots so much, but the type of parking spots, because it turns over into more employee parking. So instead of a need for, say, 20 retail spots in the west lot, you have 20 employees that you can put in the east. So it does affect parking.
Yeah, what I would, I guess what I would say on that front is, this actually sounds a lot like what I think what our parking and traffic expert is going to speak to because it gets into the shared parking use, I think, which is what you're alluding to.
I, I just wanted-
Yeah.
Why we have site architecture and get a placeholder, myself in there. Okay. My last question is, in the previous testimony, there had been, I thought, some discussion about moving the Bloomfield entrance, one where the, is that the final determinant, that's the entrance location for right now? It's not moving one where the-
We haven't moved it as part of the, during the plan proposal. It's a different location than its current location.
Yeah.
It has been shifted.
But it's not-
Correct. It is not moving further. Correct.
And it wouldn't enhance the circulation issues that you talked about if this was an entrance location?
No.
And if there was a different, if there was additional entrance, would that help circulation at all?
Well, it would come at the cost of additional parking spaces.
Yeah, but if it, you could say, maybe it's only egress.
I don't think, I don't think it would necessarily, you know, benefit. It wouldn't solve the problems that I raised about circulation due to the one-way access configuration.
Your speculation is predicated on the request for two entrances. The entrances were on different, would it change your circulation specification?
No, I think we've, we've sought to optimize where those entrances can be.
So they're, they're integrated? They're one parcel?
Well, it's, they serve a, an integrated lot, yes.
Okay, it's a choice that you helped make with the application.
Absolutely. No, we dictated where those entrances would be.
Thank you very much.
Other questions from the public?
Well, counselor?
So I have no further witnesses this evening, but obviously we have promised to come back with traffic, parking, and planning testimony.
Another thing that I would like you to keep in mind for the next round with respect to the, the parking testimony. And you had talked about it a little bit, about the employee parking. And if the employee parking, if some of the employee parking is going to be on the east parcel, and the use of this, use of this tunnel under the street is anticipated, then I guess we need to know that the, the security, the impact on security for the building with having grocery store, which most grocery stores are staffed by part-time people. So there's, there's turnover, there may be two or three shifts of turnover of people going in and out. And so the impact upon that building, I think, is, is something that we need to consider because if the operator of that building is, is going to have issues with, with this traffic, it's not a nine, they're not nine-to-five jobs, you know? And depending on this, depending on the hours of the store, you may basically have three shifts, a morning shift, an afternoon shift, and an evening shift. You know, even if they're not open 24 hours, you know, they're working four-hour shifts.
How do they get the carts back if they have carts that go over to the east parcel?
Well, they're going to have to-
They're going to bring them back to the town.
Well, it has to be, there has to be some sort of cart retrieval, and that's the operation of the store.
That's a tough one.
Because the store's path mark used to send out, used to hire a van to go around town and pick up the carts because they were responsible for those carts. They were their property. And so they have to have, and those carts are expensive, by the way. Those things are like $500. Were $500 10 years ago. So I don't know what they are now, you know? And so they, they will send people out to, to bring them back.
We'll address that, Mr. Chairman.
So next meeting is for this?
September 24.
And where are they on the agenda? What do we have?
This, this, the first meeting of the month, next month, they have a meeting on September 17. We have applications that night, other applications. So the next meeting for this will be September 24.
Okay, they're the only ones on the agenda for that.
They're the only ones on the agenda that night.
Okay. All right. So no further notice on that, and we'll see you back on the 24th.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Thank you, everyone.
We have bills. Our bills have been approved by our auditor.
Yeah.
Does anyone, does anybody else have any comments on them? Otherwise, I would move to approve.
Scott, you made a bill?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.